Good evening. We're going to call our meeting to order. If you are going to speak on any items on the agenda, please fill out a card and submit them to Sergeant at Arms over there. And we'll go ahead and open up the meeting at 6:00. And we'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Brown, would you do the pledge tonight?
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Mayor Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Kellum.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Raymond.
Here.
The next item is the swear in. Mayor, we're going to change that to Mr. Brown, right?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, we're going to do the council oath of office, and we'll start with Councilmember Kim Davis.
Okay. I got changed, but I don't know how you're exactly doing it.
Thank you.
I just was told that he was going to go first. But you're going to do the council first?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Garganese, it's up to you. Ms. Davis.
You need to say your name. I say your name.
I, Kim Davis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida.
And the charter and the ordinances of Cape Canaveral, Florida.
And that I am entitled to hold office.
And that I am entitled to hold office.
In the city of Cape Canaveral.
In the city of Cape Canaveral.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of the office of city council.
Of the office of city council.
Of the city of Cape Canaveral.
The city of Cape Canaveral.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. You are doing well.
I, Wes Morrison, do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support, protect, and defend. The Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the United States of Florida. And the state of Florida. And the charter and ordinances of the city of Cape Canaveral. And the charter and ordinances of the city of Cape Canaveral. And that I am entitled to hold office. And that I am entitled to hold office. In the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida. In the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida. And that I will faithfully perform. And that I will faithfully perform. All of the duties of the office of city council. All of the duties of the office of city council. Of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida. Of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida. So help me God. So help me God.
Congratulations. You are doing well. Go ahead. 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 Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you. I want to congratulate the newly elected council members and the citizens of this community. At this time, I'd like to ask our city clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Kellum.
Here.
Mayor Morrison.
Here.
Councilmember Raymond.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Okay. So before we officially conduct business in today's meeting, I'd like to welcome everyone and let you know that my intention as mayor of the city of Cape Canaveral is that we create a space where every member of this council community feels heard, is respected, and is valued and engaged. I want to welcome, as I said, the new city council members here and provide an opportunity for them to share some remarks after we deliver the outgoing presentation to Councilmember Mike Brown and Mayor Robert Hoag. So first, give me a moment here. We'll step down and present to Councilmember Brown. Thank you. On behalf of the city of Cape Canaveral and all the citizens of this community, we want to present you with this gift and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Now, this time, I present this one humbly to Mayor Hoag, who has served this city for decades. He's lived here over 70 years, his entire life. I've been studying up on the history of Cape Canaveral, and you can't go back to a time where you don't see a Hoag's name involved and committed to this community. And at this time, Mayor Hoag, if you'll join me, we'd like to present you with some gifts here that we provided for you. These are a set of coins from the city of Cape Canaveral in honor of your service. Thank you. And this is the actual gavel that you used to serve us from the years of 2015 to 2021. We want to thank you for all you've done for this community. Thank you. This is a photo that the city also prepared. It'll go out here forever. Mayor, you've served in the community. Mayor Hoag is our 14th mayor to serve this city. And at this time, Mr. Mayor, after Councilmember Brown, if you want to leave us with some remarks here, any final statements or thank yous? The floor is yours. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to thank the citizens of Cape Canaveral for giving me this opportunity. This was my fourth election in seven years, and you talked about taking a toll on you. These elections will definitely do that. And one thing I did learn, that the pay for city council is terrible. But I do cherish each and every one of you, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. I look forward to working with the city on a continuous basis. I want to thank you all again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Hoag.
Thank you. I didn't come prepared for the speech, but I'm very thankful. I'd like to especially thank the past councils that started this city and all their endeavors to get the city up and running, because it was hard feat to do. And also, I'd like to thank all the council members that have worked to make this city today what it is. The city in the last 10 years has progressed twice as much as it has ever progressed since its incarnation. And it's very obvious just when you look around. If you were back here 65 years ago, you'd know. And even 20 years ago. We grew out of a small building that was City Hall the size of this building right here that you're in with the employees. So you can imagine what that was like working in those conditions. The staff that we have today is tremendous. And I want to thank staff for doing what you did under my tenure as mayor. I think we progressed tremendously within just a few 10 years or so. And I don't think there's a better staff in this Brevard County, because I pretty well know all of them in all the city halls. Not only my elected position, my business position takes me to every city hall and even in River County. So I know basically a lot of the staff. And I think we have one of the best working staffs in Brevard County, without a doubt. And I again want to thank you personally, Mr. Morley, Mr. Garganese, John and David and Gassavo, Jeff and Jim. It's been tremendous working with you guys. I've known, like Mr. Moore, I've known him a long time. He's a good friend. But you guys do great. Keep up the good work and keep the city moving forward. Thank you. And good evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, before we get into the selection of the mayor pro tem, I want to welcome, as I said, the newly elected council members and at this time, give each one of them an opportunity to say any remarks. So, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything? The floor is yours.
I'm just going to keep it very simple. I just want to thank all those that helped support me during this election. Get a little emotional. I couldn't have done it without you. And especially my two sisters, you got me through it all, and I thank you so very much. So I look forward to working with this council, with the staff, and with the citizens of Cape Canaveral, because I believe we will continue to move this city forward, and we will be able to do a lot of good. So again, I thank you.
And thank you. Councilmember Don Willis.
It's probably a big mistake to give the son of a Baptist minister a working microphone. I'm deeply humbled by the support I've received by the residents and voters in Cape Canaveral. And I'm grateful for the trust in giving me this opportunity to serve our city. There are many people that I would like to publicly thank for helping me during this election, but my three minutes would probably be up if I began reading names. So I do want to recognize two people specifically. First and foremost, my wife, Paula. She's stood by me and given me her unwavering support through my many business endeavors, through successes and failures, and most recently, this election. And without her, I literally would not be here. She's my editor, publisher, partner, and a wonderful mother to our three talented children. And over time, I'm sure you're going to realize that the children got their talent from her. And secondly, I want to recognize and thank Jay Petty for his friendship and willingness to take on any task and help in any way with my campaign. He's a true friend and a smart man. Paula and I moved to Brevard 11 years ago and could have lived anywhere along the coast. We chose Cape Canaveral because it felt like home. It is home. We've met many interesting people and made many good friends here. During this campaign, a gentleman rather intently pointed out to me that I was not originally from here, to which I replied that I may not have been born here, but I got here as quick as I could. I cannot guarantee any certain result on any issue that I may face on city council, but I can guarantee the effort that I'll put into it and to finding the proper solution for the city. And I can assure you that I will listen to our citizens and give proper consideration to your views on every issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Willis.
This time, I'd like to take the opportunity to give my thanks. And as I say on social media and all my communications, hello, neighbors and friends. I want to take this time to thank you, the citizens of Cape Canaveral, who have put their trust in me to serve as your next mayor. For those who have helped me along the way, made up of my immediate family, my best friends, my sister, my brother who's here tonight, and my personal hero, my mom. I want to also thank my extended remaining family, some who are here tonight, my father-in-law, Mark, my mother-in-law, Vicky, and Grandma Tippins, all the way from Pensacola, Florida. If you missed anyone else in that merge, I want to thank you all for being here. And I especially want to thank my soulmate, my wife, Christina. I love you. And to be the daughter of a politician isn't easy. I want to thank you, Parker, for hanging in there through the years. Your time, faith, prayers, and encouragement to all of you have made all the difference. But most of all, I want to thank God for giving me the strength, the courage, and the hope to carry on. And my mother always reminded me of the verse, Philippians 4:13, that says, "We can do all things through Christ who strengthens me." I also would like to congratulate, as I said, our two council members, Willis and Davis. I know how hard both of you have worked to earn the trust of the people, and I look forward to working with you and the entire council, who I've had the pleasure of serving with, with Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Raymond and Councilmember Kellum. We're going to make a great team here in our role on council, and I hope that we make the citizens proud. And back to the people of Cape Canaveral, my neighbors, I know that you love this city. I do too. It's an honor to have been sworn in twice on the city council and now have the opportunity to serve as the 15th mayor of the city of Cape Canaveral. Sometimes I just stop and think in awe about how important this city has been over the course of history, which is why this moment is truly humbling to me. I believe many of you had some changes that you wanted to see within this city, and I felt this way too. That's why I put myself out there and got involved. As mayor, I promise that your concerns will be respectfully heard. Your feedback will be sought and honored. I believe our leaders should be out from behind the dais, making decisions with the people, not just for the people. Transparency and accountability in government are critical, along with the respecting foundations of our charter, the Florida State Constitution, and the Constitution of the United States of America. And that's what I pledge to you to bring during this term. My campaign asked you to vote yes for Wes. Many of you said it. But that was not just about me. That message was about us. We said yes to the acronym W-E-S, and that meant improving our water, improving our engagement, and improving our safety here in Cape Canaveral. But it was a message of engagement that stood out and that the citizens seemed to truly desire. That has been my message since the beginning, back since 2017, because I believe our process needed to be improved, and at times, it was completely broken. That message caught fire in this city, and the momentum from all of you got behind it. And I believe with my whole heart that once a message has reached its time, there isn't an army big enough in the world to stop it. As we move into the next era, my leadership approach will be to put our essential priorities first, including police, fire, state road A1A, completed sidewalks, street lights, flood mitigation, and our lagoon. I will work towards lowering taxes, reducing our debt, and strengthening our city against storm threats. I will be working with the council on identifying and defining the key performance measures around our building department, code enforcement, and other essential services that prove we are the most well-run city in the state of Florida, and that I also clearly show we are tracking towards fulfilling the vision we all agree that we want to pursue. So today, we have the opportunity to pursue a new level of good governance, one that will make Cape Canaveral the model for other cities to follow on how we strengthen the respect, the transparency, and accountability for those who might have lost hope along the way to make a difference in this community. I hope you, as an individual, will feel that your voice is heard, valued, and respected, and engaged along the way more than ever before in this special city. I have the highest confidence in our city administration, led by Todd Morley, our advisory boards, and our fellow neighbors, and the dedicated council members who sit before you today to help serve the residents and businesses of this community as we do life together in the sun, space, and sea. And finally, again, I want to thank Mayor Bob Hoag and Councilmember Mike Brown for everything they gave and sacrificed to help our community. Their willingness to step up is one that I will always respect. They are appreciated, and I genuinely say thank you to them. I take this responsibility very seriously, and I will courageously strive to make all of you and the citizens proud as your mayor of our home here in the beautiful city of Cape Canaveral. God bless you all, and God bless the city of Cape Canaveral. Thank you.
Now, before we get on to the selection of the mayor pro tem, that's the vice mayor who serves with our city, I wanted to just take a moment here, and I move that we, before we get into the public participation, I want to see if the council has had a chance to take a look at the new process and see if this is the way that we want to move forward. If it is, this is something that I think we can move forward with pretty quickly. The, okay. So, just a brief moment here. The process that we did in the past was essentially a, it was kind of a free-for-all. It was a vote that was kind of all over the place. And so what we're going to do this year is we're just going to have a quick discussion item on who the mayor pro tem will be, and I'd like to open it up to the council. Whoever wants to go first and maybe talk. And if we want to do this process, we can move forward with voting. So, Council, Mayor Pro Tem Raymond.
I like your suggestion, if you are the one that suggested this, that we vote for who we think should be the mayor pro tem. And as I said, I've been honored to be the mayor pro tem, and I think it's been a great experience for me, and I thank the city for allowing me to do that. And I was able to do a lot of different things to represent the city, and I've been very proud of our city. And I think I did a good job representing us, especially for the Mayor's Fitness Center and the Mayor's Fitness Challenge. I'm so proud that we have been able to show what we can do, and we certainly did. That was a lot of fun, and it's a lot of fun to do that. And I'm happy, and I'm very available to represent our city anytime anyone wants to. I'm very good at answering questions and taking a lot of phone calls at home and trying to solve a problem. I think I agree that there's a solution to every single problem, and I'm very happy to work together with this council and with our new mayor. And I want our city and our new mayor and our new council to be very successful. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for serving as our mayor pro tem and being a great cheerleader for the city of Cape Canaveral.
It's been my honor.
Councilmember Kellum.
I think that I like this idea of just marking off who we think should be mayor pro tem. I would be honored to do it myself, but I think this is the best way to do it. So I would move forward with this ballot.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis.
I think the ballot suggestion that the city clerk's office has put forward is very good. I think it would streamline our efforts and make it move along quickly.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
I am in agreement with what everybody has said, and I am for doing it written on paper and voting this way.
You got it. At this time, I'd just like to ask, is anyone not interested in being the mayor pro tem? I think we've heard from Mayor Pro Tem Raymond that she is willing. Councilmember Kellum, if that is anything that you want to not do, this is a good time to let us know, which I think would help. It's obviously depending on your willingness, so. And I was able to do a lot of different things to represent the city, and I've been very proud of our city, and I think I did a good job representing us, especially for the Mayor's Fitness Center and the Mayor's Fitness Challenge. I'm so proud that we have been able to show what we can do, and we certainly did. That was a lot of fun, and it's a lot of fun to do that. And I'm happy, and I'm very available to represent our city anytime anyone wants to, or I'm very good at answering questions and taking a lot of phone calls at home and trying to solve a problem. I think I agree that there's a solution to every single problem, and I'm very happy to work together with this council and with our new mayor. And I want our city and our new mayor and our new council to be very successful. Thank you.
And thank you for serving as our Mayor Pro Tem and being a great cheerleader for the city of Cape Canaveral.
It's been my honor.
Councilmember Kellum?
I think that, I like this idea of just marking off who we think should be Mayor Pro Tem. I would be honored to do it myself, but I think this is the best way to do it, so I would move forward with this ballot.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis?
I think the ballot suggestion that the city clerk's office has put forward is very good. I think it would streamline our efforts and make it move along quickly.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
I am in agreement with what everybody has said, and I am for doing it written on paper and voting this way.
You got it? At this time, I'd just like to ask, is anyone not interested in being the Mayor Pro Tem? I think we've heard from Mayor Pro Tem Raymond that she is willing, Councilmember Kellum. If that is anything that you want to not do, this is a good time to let us know, which I think would help. It's obviously depending on your willingness, so...
I think most everyone is willing.
I agree.
Okay. Excellent. So at this time, obviously, I'm not somebody that would be on Mayor Pro Tem. I'd just like to give some of my thoughts on it. Again, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Raymond, for serving in that capacity for these years. Cape Canaveral used to rotate. Mayor Pro Tem went through a few different ways of doing it. They did it where the Mayor Pro Tem stayed the same for many years, and so I like the idea of rotating, and I think just for me, this is a time to share who we think would be good before the vote, and I'm advocating, I think, knowing that Councilmember Kellum is willing to serve, it would be a great opportunity for you to help us out and serve in that capacity, and I think every single council member up here would do a great job. But that's my thought, my two cents on the subject. And if any other council members want to weigh in on who they believe would be good, this is a time to do it before we make our selection. So, thank you. Okay. City managers, as far as voting, you want to just knock that out now?
Yes, sir. Anthony's got the ballots. We'll just hand them out, and you can just fill them out.
Thank you.
Yeah, there are...
Okay.
...prepared ballot, three ballots with your name, and the event, three ballots are needed. So it's a fully transparent and open nomination process. I think the clerk is asking you to initially fill out one of the ballots as to who you would like to nominate as the Mayor Pro Tem. Pass those ballots down, and we'll see where we go from there after...
So just one ballot?
One ballot at this point, yes.
Okay. Got it.
Pass them down, and...
To whom?
This one.
Who's supposed to be?
That's my...
That's on the ballot.
Yes, you are.
[laughing]
Is that all of them?
Yes.
Okay. Wow, we're faster than the supervisor of elections up here. This is good.
Let's see if I'm a pretty good canvassing board at this point. All right. We have... Oh, interesting. Um, let's see. We have two nominations for Angela Raymond, two nominations for Nikki Kellum, and one nomination for Mr. Willis. Three nominees. Clerk wrote, we...
Yeah, so we'll have a revote, and you can only vote for the top two.
Yeah, so we have Mr. Raymond and Ms. Kellum with two initial votes, so if you cast another back for one of those two and pass them down, we'll see if we have two. We have three votes for Ms. Kellum and two for Ms. Raymond. So if there to be a majority to nominate Nikki Kellum as Mayor Pro Tem, a motion would be in order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you. This time, we need to vote, so I'm looking for a motion to appoint Councilmember Kellum as our Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll make a motion.
I will... Okay. So I got a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Councilmember Kellum. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Kellum?
Yes.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
So it looks like the motion passed five o to appoint Councilmember Kellum as our next Mayor Pro Tem. Congratulations. Okay, so at this time, we're going to go into the public participation point of the meeting. This is an opportunity for the public to allow any member to address any items that do not appear on the agenda, and any agenda item that is listed on the agenda for the final official action by the city council, excluding public hearing items, which are heard at the public hearing portion of the meeting, ministerial items such as the approval of the agenda minutes, informational items, and quasi-judicial or emergency items. Citizens, we ask you to please limit comments to three minutes, which you will be notified by the beeping signal and the light in front of the dais. The city council will not typically take any action under the public participation section of the agenda. However, the city council may schedule items not on the agenda as regular items and act upon them in the future. And then I just want to let you know, right after the public comment, I would like to call for a 10-minute recess before we head into the business of the city. This will allow any family members to leave and say goodbyes, pictures, whatever we want, and have a clean break before we start voting in the business. So at this time during the public comment portion of the meeting, I have a card from Ms. Kay Jackson. Thank you.
Congratulations to our new council and to you, Mayor Morrison. I wanted to bring up a couple of things with the new ProChamps registration for vacation rentals. I am involved with vacation rentals and have had vacation rental property here in the area for quite some time, and I've seen a couple of things that concern me, and I wanted to bring this up to the council in hopes that you might look at these things going forward, because I was in those meetings about ProChamps and the software and what we were, what our expectations were from that software. And one thing that I saw, and I don't know, the city attorney may have to answer this for me, is I've seen some people that are having issues with the noise, too many people in an Airbnb or VRBO rental, and it's typically, what I'm seeing is it's in a lot of residential areas. And I sat through our planning and zoning meeting quite some time ago, around 2004, 2005, when we were looking at the seven-day minimum rentals and that type of thing. And I totally agree with those. I'm not against that ordinance whatsoever. What I'm concerned with, as someone that works in this arena, is the fact that we have a residential home right here, and then we have an Airbnb right next to it in our one zone. So we literally have a rental right by residential zone. I know that Airbnb lobbied through the state of Florida and tried to get a law passed where you could put one in in any area. All of those died in the Senate. So as we look at dealing with the ProChamps and how they work, I'm a little concerned because I know we grandfathered our five-day rental, or our seven-day rental, minimum rental, but why did we not grandfather our exact name in with that? Because of the fact that we've got a rental right next to a residential area. Now, I'm in a rental community, and I understand that. I made an active decision to do that. However, if you live in a residential area, you didn't make an active decision to live right next door to a rental. So I'm curious about that, if that is something that can even be grandfathered, because what occurred is we had everyone start these rentals in any location before the legislation made it through the state. So that's one thing I was hoping that the council will take a look at in the near future. The other thing is that the fees are excessive. It's $300 to license a rental, and for the state, that fee is 220. So that puts people in Cape Canaveral at a disadvantage when they're looking at renting a unit and they're following the rules. So the fees are a little cumbersome, and I'm starting to go in past my time. The third thing I wanted to let you know is I have seen residential properties that are homesteaded on their system. So therefore, I understood from our initial meetings about this software company is that they would verify those properties with the property records. They should have no problem pulling up an address and knowing if it's homesteaded or not. Now, if yours is in that database and it is homesteaded, the resident has to go through this whole process to dispute it with the company. So now, you've got people that live here full-time that are having to spend time to dispute something when they don't even rent. So these are three issues with this that I've seen that I wanted to bring up to the council, really kind of four with the seven-day minimum and the zoning, but I was hoping that you might be able to look at that in some committee or going forward, or at least bring it to the agenda, you know, to the council agenda later.
Thank you very much. I think that there's, certainly I've got a list of my own, and I would imagine this council has some issues with it, and I hope to be meeting with staff here soon on it. But yes, Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Kellum, excuse me.
Thank you. I had wanted to, before we break, I wanted to bring up a motion for discussion on this very point. I've been getting a lot of calls from residents about ProChamps and what's happening and the seven-day rentals, and I really think we need to discuss it maybe at the end of the agenda, just to have a discussion, to give staff, you know, our opinion on what should be happening, because there's a lot of things that, through our agreement with them, that is not happening, and I just think we need a discussion sooner rather than later, because this is very important to the residents of the city, and we've been at this for a while. So if we could have a discussion at the end of the meeting between the new council, that would be great.
So if I understand, you wanted to add on an agenda item, discussion...
Right.
...to discuss STRs. We have 11 agenda items, so I would need a motion to add this agenda item on to discuss STRs, short-term rentals, and I assume you would want that at number 12 at the very end?
Yes, sir.
Item 12? Okay. If you would like to make that motion, or someone else?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we added item for discussion on short-term rentals at the end of the, at number 11 for items for discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Kellum. Anyone second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Got a second from Councilmember Willis. City clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tem Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Thank you. So at this time, I want to take a 10-minute recess, if that's okay with council, and we'll reconvene right now. I was told to not watch that clock. We're going to go on 6:44. Let's get back here at 6:55 PM. Thank you.[1386.01][1386.01][laughter]
Yeah. Dave?
[inaudible]
Well, it's very uncomfortable. It's all...
We have to see if we have a...
[inaudible]
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 We have to see what the state of the country is. We have to see what the state of the country is. We have to see what the state of the country is. We have to see what the state of the country is. We have to see what the state of the country is. We have to see what the state of the country is. We have to see what the state of the country is. We have to see what the state of the country is. We have to see what the state of the country is. We have to see what the state of the country is. We have to see what the state of the country is. We have to see what the state of the country is. We have to see what the state of the country is. We have to see what the state of the country is. We have to see what the state of the country is. We have to see what the state of the country is. We have to see what the state of the country is. We have to see what the state of the country is. Thanks, Daniel.
Thank you.
What's that? Can I run behind? It's called. 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 Hey, I'm good. How are you? Good to see you. You guys see? Thank you. You guys 32 seconds. You need to get. Oh. You better run. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. They want to be on advisory. I don't know who they are. Where's the two ladies? Wait with the mask. Lady six can sit next to us. Dave, do you see the man in the white shirt? I see. The two ladies in front of him. What was the mascot? One looks like a mascot. Advisory. They want to be on advisory. Pick what's being asked, but not stay close there and get their purpose. There are vacancies. Vacancies are online, and the application is online, too. And they need to turn it back in. I sent that to you.
Okay.
Or maybe I didn't. That's what I want for it.
Oh, we got to call the mayor. Oh, there he is.
Yes, sir. All right, we're going to get started here in about a minute. Thank you for your patience, everyone.
I heard that was.
Okay.
Well, maybe I didn't. That's what I want for it.
Oh, we got to call the mayor. Oh, there he is.
Yes, sir. All right, we're going to get started here in about a minute. Thank you for your patience, everyone.
I heard that was.
Okay. Todd, do you have everyone you need here?
We're ready to proceed. Yes, sir.
Okay. Good deal. Counsel, we ready?
We're ready.
Excellent. Okay. So now, we are at 7 o'clock on the dot, and we're going to move into the consent agenda. At this time, does the council, any council members wish to pull any of these items?
I would, I would like to pull number two for the same reason I pulled it at the last meeting. I think that, you know, we could do this down the road a little bit to give the new council time to understand what the CRA does and all that before we take a vote on it. That's just my opinion.
Okay, so item number two, Mayor Pro Tim Kellum would like to pull. And then, for those of you who don't know consent agenda, we will approve them all at once, except for the ones that we pull. So are there any other items that the council would like to pull? City Clerk, would you please call the roll to?
Need a motion.
Need a motion to approve the consent agenda items one, three, and four, please.
I'll make a motion to approve one, three, and four.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, and a second by Councilmember Davis. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
For.
Councilmember Raymond?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
Motion passes 5-0 to approve the consent agenda items one, three, and four, please.
I'll make a motion to approve one, three, and four.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, and a second by Councilmember Davis. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
For.
Councilmember Raymond?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
Motion passes 5-0 to approve the consent agenda items one, three, and four. Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, item number two, floor of yours.
Yes, I just think that this public partnership is, is a matter of just the city agree, or the CRA agreeing to pay back the money to the city for this. I just think that with a new council, and there isn't any really immediate rush, that maybe we could wait to the next meeting, give the new council members time to absorb what's happening here, and make a decision on the way they want to vote. And I would like to hear from the new council, if they're comfortable with passing this now, I would support putting it back on the agenda, or, so that's where I am.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Kellum. Any other members of the body want to speak on this item?
It would be helpful to get some input from the public. I know Councilmember Davis and I are new to it and haven't had the benefit of getting some of the input that other council members have had from the public directly as council members. To me, that would be helpful to get some of that.
Thank you. And just so I understand, Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, your motion would be to table this item?
Yes.
Okay.
To the next meeting, or a special meeting, just to give us time to, and the other, the new council to, you know, understand what's happening and how this works.
So we can discuss this further after, but if we, if we want to go ahead and make a motion, and Councilmember Willis, you want to provide us with a second, we can discuss the merits of tabling it, but I just want to make sure we at least have a motion and a second before we go on any further, so. Councilmember Kellum?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to table this to the next meeting, a special meeting, or the next council meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, so we got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, and a second by Councilmember Willis to table this at either the next December city council meeting, and/or, or/or a special meeting at our desire, if we, I assume that's to move sooner, is that correct? Okay. Any other discussion that we want to have on that, just so we, now we clearly understand what the motion is and what's being proposed?
Mayor, if I could just put clarification, the motion is to table to the next regular city council meeting unless another council meeting is called prior.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Raymond, do you have any thoughts on that?
I'm fine with this agreement, and at the strategic planning, we all talked about this, and all five of us did agree. And then, when we had the CRA meeting in September, all five of us did agree to this. So I just wanted to point that out. So I'm very much in favor in moving forward, and John DeLeo has told us that the first payment will be due probably in February, and if we don't pay it, then we will have to start paying penalties. So I'm very much in favor of moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think, yes, Councilmember Davis, one moment, I just want to echo what Councilmember Raymond said, is that we will seek, according to our finance director, we need to move and give ourselves enough time before any penalties come in in February. So I think that as far as calling the special meeting, it would make sense to let staff give us the guidance on a special meeting, unless they think December is better, but please, Councilmember Davis?
I'm for moving forward with this. I think there was total competence in the previous council. They have voted on this. It has been open for discussion, so I am for moving forward with it.
Thank you. So at this time, we have Councilmember Raymond and Davis, who say that they're ready to move forward with it now, if I understand, where Councilmember Willis and Mayor Pro Tim Kellum believe a little bit more time would be good, as long as we don't go past that February.
Exactly.
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Excuse me?
Yes, please.
Are we able to just add this on to December, and would that be, that would be good enough to add it on to the December meeting?
I'm, I'm fine with that. I just, I would like staff to let us know if that's a problem, if city manager wants to weigh in.
Thank you.
No, we don't have a problem with that, and as, as council knows, there is another discussion item coming up on this agenda that's pertinent to this, that will also help inform that. So I think by the end of the night, we'll have a good sense of when this would come back.
Okay. So December would be okay?
Doable, yes.
Okay. And if anything comes up sooner, I think this council says we're ready to move quicker. So no one's saying no to this. I think that we are saying, let's give ourselves some time, and it's okay, as long as we don't go past that, get ourselves in muddy water with the February. So with the motion from Council, or Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, we have a second from Councilmember Willis. Any further discussion? Hearing none. City Clerk, would you please call the roll to table this item to the December regular city council meeting?
Councilmember Davis?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
For.
Councilmember Raymond?
Against.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
The motion passes to table the item for the December regular city council meeting to discuss this in our local agreement at that time, 3 to 2, with Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, myself, Mayor Morrison, Councilmember Willis being for, and Councilmember Raymond and Davis against. Thank you. So now, we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda item. This time, I do have a point of clarification with our city attorney. When we, for items number 5A and B, we need to treat those separately. Is that right, Mr. Attorney?
3A and B.
Oh, did, oh, the numbers changed with the new revise, so thank you very much. No, no, that's okay.
It's 5A and B.
Is it 5A? Okay.
Yeah.
The amended agenda is 5A and B.
We need to adopt these separately, A and B?
Yes. They need to be, a motion separately for both ordinances, however, you know, unless there's any objection, you know, we have one public hearing, we can have one public hearing for, for both ordinances, because they apply to the same property. The request is to change the future land use map designation for this property and change the zoning designation. So if you want to consolidate the public hearing, that's fine for, for 5A and B, but you need separate votes for the two ordinances.
Let's, I think they're going to move pretty smooth. Let's just take them one at a time, and if you would-
You could do that.
-please read the ordinance, Mr. Attorney.
All right. Ordinance number 25-2021, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a property owner-initiated small-scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation of a parcel of property described as tax parcel ID 24-37-23-CG-13-4, and legally described as the east half of Lot 4 in lots 5, 6, 7, and 8, Block 13, Avon by the Sea. According to the plat thereof, as recorded in plat book 3, page 7, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, from C1 Commercial to R2 Medium Density Residential, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more protected-
Oh, did, oh, the numbers changed with the new revise. So thank you very much. No, no, that's okay.
It's five A and B.
Is it five A? Okay.
Yeah. Amended agenda is five A and B.
We need to adopt these separately, A and B?
Yes, they need to be, a motion separately for both ordinances. However, you know, unless there's any objection, we have one public hearing. We can have one public hearing for, for both ordinances because they apply to the same property. The request is to change the future land use map designation for this property and change the zoning designation. So if you want to consolidate the public hearing, that's fine for, for five A and B, but you need separate votes for the, the two ordinances.
Let's, I think they're going to move pretty smooth. Let's just take them one at a time. And if you would,
You could do that.
Please read the, the ordinance, Mr. Attorney.
All right, ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-two-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a property owner-initiated small-scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation of a parcel of property described as tax parcel ID. Twenty-four dash thirty-seven dash twenty-three dash CG dash thirteen dash four, and legally described as the east half of lot four in lots five, six, seven, and eight, block thirteen, Avon by the Sea. According to the plat thereof, as recorded in plat book three, page seven of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, from C one commercial to R two medium-density residential, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A, attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan in an effective date. This is final reading of this ordinance. Also considered the adoption hearing of this proposed future land use map amendment. It's a legislative matter that's being presented. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. This is a public hearing item. We'll certainly bring this back to council for discussion, but at this time, do we have any? I guess I would need a card submitted for public hearing item, right, if there are? But no, corrected. Like to open this up to a public hearing for item five A for ordinance twenty-five twenty-two-one. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Council? Any discussion?
No, I have no discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. If, hearing discussion, if there isn't any, looking for a, yes, city manager?
Mayor, if it helps, just because we have a couple new council members that weren't here for the first reading of this. Just a little background.
Thank you.
I met one-on-one with every council member about the pertinent items, but this wasn't pertinent at that time, but the amended agenda made it pertinent. So forgive that, that we, we didn't get to cover that with those two council members. Just a brief recap, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong. The owner of this property, it's in the 100 block of Jefferson Avenue, and it's currently zoned C one commercial. Back in the day, the city code provided a method to change that by a special exception to R two, where you could build multifamily on it. And that has been the, the predominant development pattern in that 100 block once you get off of A one A. So this would be consistent with that. But the special exception category for a residential in C one was done away with several years ago, which meant the only avenue for a property owner who want to develop residential in this block of C one is to actually go for a true rezoning of the property. So there's a lot of properties like this up and down the east side of A one A and North Atlantic Avenue. And city staff has been working on for months now, doing a comprehensive rezoning effort to memorialize and take care of all these properties who, most of them are developed. And the concern there is you're residential. What happens if, you know, a hurricane blows it down, fire tears it down, can you rebuild? Well, what's your status? So the mortgagers, the insurance companies, everybody agreed, yeah, we would like to memorialize these houses and these developments as residential. So we've got this big project going forward to do many of these. And this, this council will see that very soon in the coming months. However, this property owner, he didn't want to wait. And I don't blame him because the market's kind of hot right now, and he wanted to move forward with his vacant property. So he, he paid his fee to rezone it, which includes a rezoning and a, a future land use. We do any plan has to match up the rezoning. So he's basically doing what we were going to do as it present to the council anyways. He's just moving it a little further ahead, and he wants to get in there sooner rather than later. And Dave, does that cover it well?
Fantastic.
You're not just saying that because I'm city manager?
No, no boss.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I think, thank you for pointing that out, that, that the council. We, we adopted this five oh on the first reading, so this is the second and final reading. It's something that, that for me, I supported for the reasons our city manager said. I don't know if Councilmember Raymond or Mayor Pro Tim Kellum want to share, you know, your position with, with Councilmember Callison Davis, Kellum Davis and Willis. But I, I think that this is good. And obviously, if you have any questions, I know this might be new. We're happy to support, and I know staff can be there, so. Any questions?
Seems very straightforward to me, so.
I have no question.
Are you ready for a motion?
Thank you.
No questions.
No questions? Yes, thank you, Councilmember Raymond. Looking for a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-six.
All right. I move that we approve ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-two-one.
Got a motion from Councilmember Raymond and a second from Mayor Pro Tim Kellum to adopt ordinance number twenty-five twenty-two-one. Mia, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four. Motion passes five oh. Now we're moving on to ordinance number twenty-six twenty-two-one. Mr. Attorney?
Ordinance number twenty-six dash twenty-two-one. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a property owner-initiated rezoning of a parcel of property described as tax parcel ID. Twenty-four dash thirty-seven dash twenty-three dash CG dash thirteen dash four, and legally described as the east half of lot four and lots five, six, seven, and eight, block thirteen, Avon by the Sea, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in plat book three, page seven of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, from the current C one low-density commercial zoning district designation to the city's R two medium-density residential zoning district designation. Providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A, attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, and an effective date. This is second and final reading. This is what you would call a quasi judicial matter technically. And it's the companion ordinance to change the zoning map designation for the same property that you just amended the future land use map designation. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. Todd, would you like to add anything to that?
I couldn't add anything more than I didn't last time, sir.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing item for ordinance number twenty-six twenty-two-one. If there are any public hearing, anyone who would like to come speak during this, please come forward. Yes, please come up and state your name and.
My name is Kay Jackson. And I'm curious, I'm hearing all of this rezoning, and I'm really curious as to the impact on, because I'm not sure what people are developing, but when you're, when you hear C one commercial low-density going to medium-density, I start getting a little concerned because we seem to have already have some issues with our infrastructure and what we can support. Has there been, and I understand, and I appreciate, thank you, Mr. Morley, for explaining because that helps me. But I'm just curious, did we do any kind of studies to see how this is going to impact if they go in and, and develop a small apartment complex, for example, or anything like that? I know that you all are doing the second reading and that kind of thing, but I'm just curious what kind of impact this is going to have on traffic, the sewer, the sewer and storm systems and all of that? If we rezone all this and people immediately start building apartment complexes and things like that for medium-density residential?
Mayor, I'd be happy to take on that question if you like, sir.
Please.
What you're referring to is the, the concurrency process. And it's spelled in, spelled out in our comprehensive plan. Every city has that and, and in the city code. And there's adopted levels of service for wastewater, for garbage, for roadway capacities, for schools, for the impacts in, in multiple different ways. I want to say there's eight of them or so, I think. And every single development application that comes in for multifamily like this has to, or any development, has to fill out the forms, the applications for concurrency in every one of these categories. And those are usually filled out by the engineer, the civil engineer, or the other engineers working on it. And those get submitted to the appropriate department directors, and they compare that application to their level of performance standard that they're currently at. For instance, the, the sewer plant can do 1.8 million gallons per day, and we're only at, Jim, I don't know, 1 million gallons per day. And we know we've got capacity there. But we add that to the total. So we keep a running total of what that impact is. And if we ever get to near the top, then we're going to say, whoa, you know, slow the horses a little bit because we can't take anymore. So all of that is required by a comprehensive plan to be reviewed in every development application. And I hope that answers your question.
It does. I appreciate that because I, as I've said before, I've sat in planning and zoning meetings before, but it's been a while. And this is the second reading, and no one's really getting, we're not getting much participation. And I just keep, I hear medium-density, and I'm thinking of all of these apartment complexes popping up, which is fine. We need some affordable housing for people in this area. But I wanted to know that that's being looked at. So I appreciate you clarifying, clarifying that for me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Kay. Any other comments from the public on this? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Back to the council. We are looking for a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-six twenty-two-one. We can discuss after, but.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number twenty-six twenty-two-one. At the second reading.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum and a second by Councilmember Raymond to adopt ordinance number twenty-six twenty-two-one on the second reading. Any discussion, council? Seeing none. Mia, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
For.
Councilmember Raymond?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For. Motion passes five oh to adopt ordinance number twenty-six twenty-two-one. Now we are moving along to item number six during the public hearing portion of our meeting for ordinance number thirty-six twenty-two-one. Mr. Attorney?
Ordinance number thirty-six dash twenty-two-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, amending chapter one-ten land development regulations, section one-ten dash one definitions, and article nine supplemental district regulations, division four home occupations of the city code to comply with recent legislation adopted by the Florida legislature related to home-based businesses, making conforming amendments to the schedule of zoning district regulations and other provisions of the city code to comply with said legislation. Providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability, and an effective date. This is second and final reading of this ordinance. As the title indicates, the Florida legislature during the last session adopted new regulations pertaining to home-based businesses. The legislature has now preempted municipal home rule authority regarding home-based businesses. Home-based businesses are now regulated pursuant to the requirements of section five-five-nine point nine-five-five Florida statutes. As a result of the legislature's preemption, the city is required to go by law to go back and look at its city code and make the city code consistent with the legislature's preemption. So that's what this ordinance does. We went through the city code and unfortunately have to repeal the municipal home rule regulations that previously existed on the code regulating home-based businesses because cities can't do that anymore. The ordinance does, however, does, does state explicitly that the section doesn't supersede or repeal any private deed restrictions that may apply regarding home-based businesses with respect to any of the condominium units or homeowners associations in the city. Furthermore, this preemption in this ordinance do not affect any transient public lodging establishment, establishment regulations that are currently on the books and grandfathered, AKA vacation rental, seven-day rental, is not preempted by the Florida legislature or this, or this ordinance that stays in effect. Be happy to answer any other questions that the council may have, or any questions the new council members may have regarding the new legislation in this ordinance. Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Attorney. City Manager Todd, would you like to add anything to this?
No, I think he summed it up very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to public hearing, are there any questions from the council on this one? Yes, Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
I would just like to say that this is why home rule is so important, and people don't realize that the state is preempting the cities from zoning places. You can have a business next to your home now. So it's important for the citizens of our city and, and all of us to pay attention to what happens in Tallahassee. That's, that's all I really have to say. It's a shame that they are taking our ability to rule our city the way we see fit. So pay attention to what happens in Florida legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis or Davis, any questions from either one of you on this one? Thank you. Councilmember Raymond?
I have nothing. I agree with Mickey on this, that the local authority is just going by the wayside, and it seems as though more and more their, the state legislature is preempting. And I know that we have to be, we all have to be aware and advocates to keep our home rule because the local government is what's closest to the people. So it's most important to us. Thank you.
And, and I just want to echo what they're saying is that you have to pick one or the other. And so when you say, either you believe that the government closest to the people is going to be the best or the state, and sometimes it puts you in an awkward position because the state will pass items that you might agree with. However, I think the position for the true home rule advocates have to stay principled and say, even if I agree with it, I don't want you making that decision for our city. And so there's, um, there's a real tug of war there. And I'm looking over at Councilmember Raymond's bag, and she's got her home rule pens here. And there's a tremendous amount of advocacy that goes towards it. And there's a lot you can do as a citizen. I think Mayor Pro Tim Kellum had a workshop with our city manager and talked about it. And so that's the big picture issue, I think, that's at stake. But specifically, we, we've seen a deregulation of allowing home-based businesses. And with that, we'll certainly come back to council. I'd like to open up to public hearing. Do we have any public participation on ordinance number thirty-six twenty-two-one? Seeing none, we'll close the meeting. Back to council. If we're ready, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-six twenty-two-one.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Davis and a second by Councilmember Raymond to adopt ordinance number thirty-six twenty-two-one. City Clerk, any other discussion? Good? City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Against.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
Four. Motion passes four oh one to adopt ordinance number thirty-six twenty-two-one. We are now moving on to item number seven. Excuse me, is that, yes. Item number seven, ordinance number forty twenty-two-one. Mr. City Attorney?
Ordinance forty dash twenty-two-one, an ordinance of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, adopting amendments to the annual general fund, special revenue funds, agency fund, capital project funds, enterprise funds, and enterprise capital fund budgets for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty-twenty, and ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-one, provided for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions and an effective date. This is second and final reading of this ordinance. This is the annual house clean, housekeeping ordinance to reconcile the previous year's budget. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. I think this is a new one too, for this council. City Manager, would you or our finance director like to maybe give a quick?
Yes, I would ask John DeLeo to give a quick summary, if you would, John.
Yeah, for the new council, congratulations. Basically, that's what it is. It's house cleaning. It's, it's staff collecting all the outstanding invoices, rolling up all the actuals at the end of the year against what the budget is. It's, it's that simple. You know, you, you, you had a budget, now you spent this much money, now you got to bring it all together. So that's what happens here. And in the first week of December, the auditors are coming, and we'll have the annual audit. And then the auditors will make, not many, but they'll do adjusting entries based on what they have to do for their financial statements. And then we'll get through the audit. I will, I'm happy to say that staff has 100% provided the auditors effective today with all the information it needs to complete the audit. And, and once they do the audit in December, then we go through the whole process, and then hopefully in February or March, the final audit is completed and presented to council.
Thank you very much. John? Todd, any further comments on that?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, council. So this is another public hearing item. Any opening discussion, council? Okay, seeing none. Like to open this up to the public. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public hearing for this item. Ordinance number forty twenty-two-one, we are looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 362021. Oh, I'm sorry, 402021.
I'll second the motion. Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Protim Kellum to adopt ordinance number 402021 and a second by, I think, to Councilmember Willis. Any further discussion? I don't think so. Seeing none. Mia, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis.
For.
Mayor Protim Kellum.
For.
Mayor Morrison.
For.
Councilmember Raymond.
For.
Councilmember Willis.
For.
Okay, ordinance 402021 passes 5-0. Moving on to the final public hearing item, ordinance number 432021, Mr. City Attorney.
Okay, this is first reading of ordinance number 43-2021, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, amending Chapter 74 of the city code regarding parking regulations on city owned or leased property, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions incorporated into the code, severability, and an effective date. As indicated in the title, this ordinance applies with respect to parking regulations on city owned or leased property. It doesn't apply in any other respects and the way the ordinance is drafted, it permits the city manager to go ahead and erect the, impose signage regarding, you know, parking regulations pertaining to city owned or leased property. And those signage would be able to, you know, have the force of law in terms of regulating parking on city property and it's included, would be included under the penalty section of the existing parking regulations the city has on the books and, you know, would be a $30 fine consistent with all of the other parking violation penalties currently in the city code. Be happy to answer any specific questions, but currently, there's no express provision in the city code that expressly authorizes appropriate signage to be, parking signage to be enforced under the current parking regulations of the code. So staff is proposing to address that omission. I think the sheriff's office has also been involved in the drafting of this ordinance and is recommending the ordinance along with staff. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Todd, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, just a little bit of color to it. We've been able to post signs that support our code for years and typically on our city facilities where we have like closed from dusk to dawn type of regulation like a city park or something, we can erect signs, you know, this park is closed or no parking during this period of time. When we tried to enforce that recently, the sheriff's department said, we don't have a regulation that we can write a citation for. There's nothing in the books that says this is a qualified citationable offense. So we scratched our head and we said, we need to make something for that. So this is what it does. Obviously discretion is required where those city facilities are signed for that parking and they need to make sense, but this is about giving the ladies and gentlemen green over there the authority to enforce our codes about parking.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, this is the final public hearing item, but council, any discussion? I can start down there with you. Mayor Protim Kellum?
No, I have nothing to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to public hearing and come back again. Any other comments, Councilmember Willis or Davis?
No.
No discussion.
Yes. I think that this is a good idea. I think that there have been a few problems, especially at some of our smaller perks and there's been some challenges, some very fierce challenges. And I think this gives our sheriff's department the ability to issue citations when there is a problem and I really appreciate this and I know people who have been affected by this will really appreciate this. Thank you.
So I have a question on this one. The way our ordinance is written today, any public spot, overnight parking, I know at our parks is not allowed, right?
It's not specifically signed. Our parks are closed as a rule dusk to dawn.
Okay.
But parking lot spaces, not all of them have signs that say that.
So having an ordinance without a, absent of a sign, there's...
And again, we're only going to be looking at places where this is a problem area. As Councilmember Raymond referred to, we do have a smaller park area that this has happened in and this is an ideal tool for that. It may be the only place we ever apply it, but it's nice to have the tool.
So can our officers write a citation if there is no sign?
It has to be signed according to this ordinance.
Got it. So this will allow you to specifically target the areas?
That are signed.
And not have to buy a bunch of signs and enforcing, kind of roll it out over time?
Well, we would have to put the sign up to make it enforceable.
Understood. Is that a state statute?
Yes.
Okay, makes sense now.
It's the Uniform Traffic Citation Statute, which does provide some authority for municipalities to enact these local traffic or parking regulations by ordinance. So you have to, the city has to adopt the regulation by ordinance to authorize the use of the Uniform Traffic Citation process under Florida statutes. So that's what this ordinance does. It allows for the proper signage to be posted under proper circumstances and then gives the men and women in green the ability to use the Uniform Traffic Citation under Chapter 316 to issue citations to enforce the regulation. Absent this ordinance, the city's not in a position to do that effectively on city owned or leased property right now. Mayor, Commander Keck is here. If you have any questions from the BCSO perspective.
Yes, this time, I guess I have a question on the fine. $30 is the proposed fee. How does that compare to our beach overnight parking fines? Is it the same? I'm not, I don't have the...
Daniel, if you could slide the, towards the list of these.
Page two of four of the ordinance, you can see a list of existing violations and the penalty.
So it looks to be consistent, except for the handicap space being 100. Okay.
And those haven't been changed in quite a few years.
Excellent. Okay, that's all the questions I have at this time. With that, we'll go ahead and...
Mr. Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, please.
If you're going to be creating signs or displaying signs as needed, how will you determine and who is going to designate when that is going to happen?
When?
When. Are you, as city manager, going to be able to?
This ordinance gives the city manager the authority to address it on an as needed basis. Obviously, as I said before, there's discretion is going to be required there. It's not a one size fits all cure, but in certain limited applications, it would definitely work well.
Anything else on that? I have a question too. This is, questions lead to more questions, so thank you. The, as a request, could you just update the council whenever these areas are updated? I think that would give us some help and see that the specific area.
Yeah.
Where we're now putting, promulgating, putting signs up to...
I can tell you now, the first one will be Center Street Park.
Okay. I think we had an issue on Harrison as well. Harrison Avenue.
We may have some more issues there too. We'll address those as needed.
Got it.
One other question. Is that going to be occurring based upon complaints or is that going to be observed? How is, how are you going to arrive at the problem?
We find out about it through complaints and we investigate it. Sheriff's Department, code enforcement investigates it. Do we have a pattern of behavior that's disrupting the neighborhood? And that's how we'll address that.
Yeah, I think it's important that there is some sort of understanding of when the sign goes up and when the sign goes down because I could see how someone would go park in a parking space on Center Street. They've been parking there, there's never been a sign, they've never gotten a fine and then one week they come in, the little sign pops up and suddenly they get a fine. So I just think it's really important to, that we really notify the council, maybe use social media, any other avenues to promulgate and to get that out. And then the reverse is, you know, if it makes sense, if we ever go the other way to take a sign down, I don't think we would go that way because we're not trying to encourage this parking, but that'd be my only request is we can kind of get a heads up knowing when it's going to happen and I think that'll help understand the justification, what you're talking about, Councilmember.
There, I believe that there was no overnight parking sign there.
At the Center Street?
Yes.
We erected those signs within the last couple of months.
No, that overnight parking sign's been there since...
Wasn't there one we recently did, Jim, out there?
Yes, sir.
What was the newest one we did and what did it say?
No overnight parking.
Okay.
But there wasn't a fee structure.
Correct.
Okay, good. Yes, Commander.
Just to help, kind of maybe help everybody feel better about this, because when you start talking about tickets and parking and things like that, you know, I know it kind of everybody gets a little anxious, but this isn't something to where we can just go out and start issuing citations. That's not our plan. Education, you know, is our first goal, especially when it comes to the local residents here. So, you know, if there's a problem, we try and make contact with the owner of the vehicle and say, hey, you know, you can't, make sure they understand that what they can and can't do before we just go out and start citing people type thing. But yeah, we did run into this one situation to where we were kind of challenged on it and then found out, you know, legally standing, we had an issue, so we had to kind of adjust everything, but for the most part, we try and educate the folks first and resolve the issues. You know, the citation is kind of a last resort type thing or if there's a problem area that, you know, the council either addresses us or the city manager just from complaints for the citizens. So it's, this isn't something we're looking to just go out so we can start writing a whole bunch of parking type tickets unless, you know, unless there's an issue.
Thank you for that then. Yeah, I think that's important, especially to the residents who might park there. This is the first time they did it, it'd be the last time if they knew, but we understand the repeat offenders can certainly become a problem, so. Okay, I'm clear. Thank you for that, Commander. Any other questions on the council? Okay, I'd like to open it up to the public. Any public comments on ordinance number 402021? Oh, excuse me, 432021, amending Chapter 74 for parking regulations on city owned or leased property. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public hearing and looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 432021 at the first reading.
I second it.
Okay, we got a motion by Mayor Protim Kellum and a second by Councilmember Raymond to adopt ordinance number 432021 as written. First reading. Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmember Davis.
For.
Mayor Protim Kellum.
For.
Mayor Morrison.
For.
Councilmember Raymond.
For.
Councilmember Willis.
For.
Ordinance 432021 passes 5-0. Now we move on to the item for action. I'm a little, I've got three different agendas up here, so I've got a gentleness into my step. We had some changes at the beginning of the meeting. Item for action number nine is to appoint a council member as the 2022 Voting Delegate to the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization Governing Board, representing the North Beaches Coalition. This is something that we have in our local agreement, I believe, with the city of Cocoa Beach to where we share this responsibility.
Alternate and...
Last year, we were the alternate according to that agreement, which I think staff provided. This year, we will be...
The member.
The member and Cocoa Beach will actually be the alternate. This is a crucial position. It's essential that we're there. I think, Mayor Protim Kellum, you served as the alternate last year, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. So that's in a sense or two what we're voting on and Mr. City Manager, if you have any more you'd like to add to that?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. And this is more for the audience seated here rather than the council because I have had a chance to discuss this at length with all five seated council members. Of course, the biggest issue with A1A is our, the proposed roundabout. The advocacy that the city council provides on the TPO is going to be crucial this year and I think any council member is, would be well appointed because everyone here, seated here, is very passionate about A1A and safety. So the message we heard loud and clear is that this community is very concerned about the proposal. Everybody is also very concerned about safety, public safety and traffic transportation safety is top of everyone's mind, but I think, and I'm going to go ahead and say it because I don't think anybody else has come out and said it in a public meeting, I think there's a fear that this community has that if we say no to the roundabout, DOT is going to pack up their toys and go home. We don't want that. We want FDOT to put a significant contribution to our state road A1A in accordance with the council's wishes as expressed for years through resolutions for public safety improvements, which include the curb and gutter project, the managed churning movements, the wide bike lanes, the wider sidewalks, the increased number of pedestrian crosswalks that actually have lighted signals that make a red light happen so people can cross safely. We don't want to give up on any of that stuff. So there's a delicate balance that this representative of the city council is going to have to present to the TPO to help ensure that we don't lose the interest of FDOT and the funding that they have in the city of Cape Canaveral right now as we work through the wickets about this roundabout issue, which is at the last public meeting, this council, they heard me say then too, we didn't ask for a roundabout. That was never something we asked for, not that we're necessarily for it or against it, but we didn't ask for it. So that's the task ahead of this appointee for this council and I imagine he'll be very actively engaged with TPO in the next year. Mayor.
Thank you very much. This is a business item, City Attorney, right, to where we will need to take up a formal vote?
Yes.
Okay. So the task at hand is to appoint someone. Mayor Protim Kellum, did you have to actually sit in any of those meetings as an alternate last year?
Yes. Probably about three meetings. And it was, it's very informative. It's, you learn a lot. I think it's in a really important position, especially this year with what's happening here in A1A and I would like to nominate Councilman Don Willis for the position, if he would like to take it. I think he's a strong councilman. He has the heart of our city in his mind and I think he would be excellent for that position.
I'll second that.
Okay, so you want to make a, you're making a motion to nominate?
I'm making a nomination for Mr. Willis, Councilman Willis.
Okay, just looking for...
Do we need to make a motion?
And I second it.
Just to make a formal, I move to nominate.
Okay, I move to nominate Councilman Don Willis for the Space Coast Transit.
Okay.
And I second it.
Got a motion by Mayor Protim Kellum and a second by Councilmember Raymond to appoint Don Willis as the council member as the 2022 Voting Delegate to the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization Governing Board, representing the North Beaches Coalition. And with that, we can open up a little further discussion. My first question is, Councilmember Willis, is this something that you'd be willing to do?
I would be very willing to do it. I think this is very important and I think it's going to be somewhat tricky to navigate and I hope that I have enough business experience to know how to keep everybody on track and everybody interested in supplying what we need.
Well, thank you for serving and being willing. Councilmember Davis, any comments on it?
I think he would do an excellent job.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I have one question. So the Cocoa Beach Commissioner, Skip Williams, is the current. Do we, as far as the alternate goes, so if Cape Canaveral Representative, Councilmember Willis can't make the meeting?
It's my understanding the alternate would take over the voting right.
I don't want to, so is there an option in the interlocal agreement that would actually allow us to send another person from Cape Canaveral instead of the alternate? Does that?
No.
No.
So coordinating with the alternate on priorities is also important.
And I ask that because we've got the word roundabout and it's... And I ask that because we've got the word roundabout, and it's very important, and I don't know who that, that is. I would, might rather have Councilmember Raymond go opposed to, you know, them, and I say that respectfully to Cocoa Beach, but just because there's so many specific issues.
I think they meet once a month, and I think that it's important for the person who's representing us to attend once a month.
Yes.
So that we really have our voice heard. It's a very, very important position, especially this year. Especially this year.
And is there anything that we can do as a council to prepare Don for staff? I know staff sends him ready, but.
Yes. What I would suggest is that Don meet with Arland and Brenda Supranaut. Arland is on our Community Advisory Committee to the TPO, and Brenda Supranaut is on the Technical Advisory Committee. So they're very up to speed with the happenings on the TPO. So I think those meetings would be great, and I would ask my secretary, Lisa, I think she's listening in somewhere, to help coordinate those meetings.
Excellent. Thank you. So we have, any further discussion, council? Good. So we've got the motion from Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, and a second from Councilmember Raymond. Mia, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay. That concludes our items for action. Now we go into the discussion items. We have one, two, and then the add-on, three discussion items. The first one up is discussion on funding of a relocation assistance program for businesses located within the city community redevelopment agency. We say CRA a lot, that's what that is. And this is an item that I believe, was this on the new council agenda? Is an explanation needed here, or?
Mia, do you recall?
I think it was.
I think an explanation is called for, because I think this is the item that was on the signed eye meeting, this one.
Okay.
The next two come under.
Yes, this was supposed to come up to the old council.
Yes.
Okay. So, Todd, if you would mind, or somebody from the team?
Sure, I'd be glad to. The, previous city council had some discussion about this at the last meeting, last month, and asked for the discussion item to come back to, for the council to consider some relocation assistance. And this is in response to the two tenants at seventy-four oh four North Atlantic Avenue, who are, are both here tonight. And they, they're here to answer any questions you may have. Staff met with them, I'm thinking it was maybe three weeks ago, to find out the extent of the grant assistance, and, and they can tell you what their needs are themselves. But if council has an appetite to help with, with the relocation expense here, because just for the audience, the, the, the purchase agreement with the city buying the building was purchased within the contract, which we're under contract right now, that the tenants may stay on the existing month-to-month leases, but for a maximum term of twelve months, not to exceed twelve months. And during that period of time, theoretically, they would be looking for another place to relocate to, and then would need some, they're asking for some assistance from the city. So, Mayor, it might be best to hear from them earlier, just to hear what their needs and thoughts are. As far as if the council were to establish a grant or a funding program, staff has proposed in the agenda two items, and you see the bullet points on the screen in front of you there. The first one would be the CRA. The CRA currently has a bucket of money that's for, for grant programs. We use this for our sign grant program. We used it last year to some degree of success, and it's still available. But October first, that bucket filled up again with twenty-five thousand dollars. So that's money that's available in the CRA for the sign program, and any additional program grants that the, the CRA and council would approve. So if you do use that option A, that would be a plan that would need to come back to the CRA board for approval. And staff is prepared to have that draft in front of the CRA board at a December meeting, a December CRA board meeting, if we go that way. The second bullet is not the CRA option, and it's just simply using the general fund. The general fund, as you know, in the budget each year includes a contingency. For those things that we just hadn't planned on, and this is certainly one of those, hadn't planned on it, we could use the contingency. I would recommend that if city council does want to do a grant program, after hearing from the, the tenants, that we use the CRA, because we have money there for assistance grants. We would just have to create the category for that, Mayor.
Thank you. And so, I'll kind of kick this one off, if, just to have an opening comment. The, I think the last council meeting, we were discussing the lease, and if I understand this correctly, this is really a contingency, a line item in the lease.
It would be added to the lease. And this, I'm sorry, thank you for bringing it up. City council also requested to review the lease. City attorney has advised me that the lease document would be subject to an ordinance approval. So there's two readings for the lease document. That gets us December and January. Now, we're scheduled to close on December twenty-seventh. So we do have a thirty-day extension that the buyer can exercise with the seller. So that gets us into that January period of time. So, time is of the essence on this, so that we are in compliance with the, the contract that we're currently under. So, what, what, to wrap that up, what I'm saying is, if, if you decide on a grant program here tonight or not, regardless, we're going to be looking at a lease agreement in December. That lease agreement will contain that grant or not, depending on what council decides here. That lease agreement would need to be approved at first reading in December. We would extend the, the purchase contract by thirty days, and then we'd have the second reading in January. It'd be approved, the leases get signed, and then we close on the property.
Got it. Thank you. So, yeah, I remember talking about the lease, and I think that we've discovered now that, at the last meeting, it was like, do we want it or not? We have to. By ordinance, any property that the city's leased is, an ordinance is required, all ordinance is required, two readings. So we're really down to the wire here. And, and that's really, for me, talking to my fellow council members, and dealing with commercial leases, just professionally up in the Northeast and all, I would feel more comfortable reviewing the lease before we get into providing direction on this. I think this gets the cart in front of the horse. Let's say we get the lease, and there's issues with it, we don't like it. Well, now, we've talked to tenants about, you know, things that maybe they want or don't want, and in my opinion, it would be best that we look at the whole lease, take this one item, factor that into the lease, and look at the whole picture before taking one specific point, deal point, if you will, and, and pushing it. And I'm willing to change my mind and listen, but not to go too big picture on this one, but that, there are other issues that, that I see with this project, and to me, this is one that I think could put us in, in a bad position if other things don't work out. For whatever reason, delays, issues, loose ends, as we heard. So, that's it. I'd love to hear for the rest of the council, but my, my recommendation is that we, we get the whole lease, because that was the, the big thing in the last meeting. And, and I think we were shooting for this November, we were shooting for this meeting to get it.
We were. We decided not to include the lease until we knew what we wanted to do with the grant assistance program. So it was, which is the horse and which is the cart? And, and we felt like this needed to be resolved before the lease was put in front of the council.
Yeah, and I think that my confusion is, if it's yea or nay, it doesn't, I think, change, it might change, I would like to see them together, and so we can see all the terms of the lease, and have this term as a part of it. And if we can bring that lease back with some op, these same exact options that we're presenting today, that's what I think would be best for this, for us to consider the council, instead of saying, well, here's the compensation, the grant program that we want to do, and then we get the lease after. I don't want to do cart or horse, I want to do cart and horse together. That's me, I'm one five, this is a body, we all need to weigh in. So, I'd like to open it up to any other comments.
Is the lease ready?
There is a draft that's being reviewed by staff right now.
Thank you. I have a problem with this, and I'll explain. I think that we have to be careful as a city, and I, what we do, whatever we do, we set a precedence. And I feel that we, we just, we're just coming out of a pandemic. We may be into it a little bit longer. We're not sure what's going to happen with that. I know a lot of businesses have suffered. Yes, I, I really feel bad about this. And I do understand that a lot of people couldn't pay their rent because they couldn't even open their businesses. I understand that part. However, I feel that we have to be careful, because what we're going to do will set up precedence. There might be other businesses that have had to relocate during the pandemic, plus the fact we have to think in terms, we're not sure what the state is going to do. The state may insist upon a roundabout, perhaps. I don't know. We definitely do know that something may happen at North Atlantic and A-1A, and there are businesses there. And then, again, they may come back and they say, well, you did this for this particular business, these businesses. We expect the same treatment for our business. Also, I think that we have to look at other businesses in town that have gone under during the pandemic, and think, if we give something, a special grant program to this group, why didn't I get that special package for my business? So I just think we have to be careful, whatever we decide to do. I mean, I feel terrible about this. However, these things happen, and change is part of our lives. And I say, yes, I'm very much in favor of the development. However, I'm not one hundred percent in favor of giving money to these businesses, because I think that we could be opening up a can of worms. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Willis?
I have, I have a question. Would this assistance or relocation program, could it be stipulated that it is based upon actions of the city versus just anyone's business going out of business or needing to be relocated for any other reason?
Yeah, I'll, I'll defer to the city attorney to answer that, but it's my, it would be my intent that if we were to, for instance, use the CRA route, that we write a business assistance grant application with criteria that include eligibility criteria of displaced as a result of property purchased by the city, direct, the property that you leased has been purchased by the city, and that's a qualifying element for that. Yes, that's what, that would be my intent.
Well, it, it just seems that that would keep the lid on that can of worms.
But what about, but what about then, the state? If the Department of Transportation decides to do something that displaces some of our businesses, our local businesses, we wouldn't be able to do anything about it. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, I understand your point.
Because then the local businesses could say, wait a minute, you did that for these businesses, but what about my businesses? But we won't have, we won't have that authority to do that. So I'm just concerned about it. I'm just thinking ahead on those things.
True, but we can't control a lot of what.
Exactly.
DOT does anyway, so.
Just questions. I've been thinking about this one. It's a tough one.
Well, this is a discussion item, and I think that direction is what our city manager was looking for, so that they can finish, in this particular instance, the final work product is a lease. And I think that, you know, that's what we just need to be mindful of, is to know, we're trying to get to a lease. Was that my phone? Sorry.
I don't know, I was, yeah.
We're trying to get to a lease. This is a, 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 a tool in the bag, I guess, to make that transition as smooth as possible for the, the parties, the stakeholders involved. I think it puts this council in a very tough position to pull this item out of the lease without looking at the whole thing. And I don't want to put us in this position built on the other, because there could be valid reasons to go either way, and yet, I don't like, for now, as a discussion item, I'm concerned about where, where we're going to be after this meeting, not knowing the lease. I'm willing to meet at the reserve meeting, at the next meeting, if we want to get the lease, to give ourselves a little bit more runway. But, you know, it's Councilmember Raymond's issues. Again, there's, there could be valid issues. To me, this is kind of a, this is a tough one that I think we, we need to, yeah, wait on the lease. Yes, please.
City Attorney, do you? I just wanted to respond to Councilman Willis's comment or question, because I think it needs to be said, and now that we have two new council members. I mean, this is a, this is a straightforward purchase of, of commercial property that's getting overly complicated. The original contract that was presented to the city council required the seller to require his tenants to vacate prior to the closing. The prior council indicated a willingness to allow the two existing tenants additional time to find a place to relocate. And we got on this discussion about, well, not to exceed twelve months. Okay, my recommendation was to require the tenants to be vacated prior to closing, otherwise it gets overly complicated. So, the other side issue to, to this is now that the city would take title to the property with the existing tenants, there's still an obligation on the existing tenants' part to vacate. That was the, that was the intent. And the issue came up, well, since the city's acquiring the property and requiring the tenants to vacate, then the, would the city council be considered relocation, some amount of relocation expenses, which is a direct consequence of the city's purchase of the property. So, there's no need to establish some broad overarching policy regarding relocation expenses in the CRA. We're trying to deal with one specific transaction and dealing with, with the cards that you're being dealt with, the existing tenants. You know, this is a redevelopment project, and under the Redevelopment Act, relocation expenses would be an eligible expense for a redevelopment agency as well as for the city. It's a policy decision whether or not the council wants to afford relocation expenses in this particular transaction. There's no obligation on the city, city council or the CRA's part to offer relocation expenses. The bottom line is, if the city moves forward with the acquisition of this property, these tenants need to relocate. And it's up to you. I mean, we have a draft lease, it's substantially complete, it hasn't even been shared with the existing, existing tenants yet, but it's substantially similar to the term, business terms of their existing lease. The problem with the existing lease that they previously had is it expired. And then the current property owner's letting them operate on a month-to-month basis, so there's really no existing, existing lease for the city to kind of, to take. So, we, we, we prepared a new lease, that if this closes, and these tenants are still in the building, we need to have some sort of commercial lease. If we close on this property, and they're no longer in the building, there's no need to even have a lease. I mean, these, the, these tenants, you know, are on notice, just like, you know, that, that their current owner of the property has entered into a contract to sell the property. I mean, it is what it is, right? You know, I, I, I understand the, the situation that the tenants face, but, I mean, it is what it is. So, you know, I, you can, you can, you can certainly consider both issues, when, when the lease gets presented to you, assuming the tenants are still in the building, prior to closing, and you can decide at your discretion whether or not you even want to offer relocation expenses. So at this point, if the council's inclined not to give us any direction on relocation expenses, my recommendation to the city manager is, the lease doesn't mention anything about relocation expenses whatsoever, because we have no direction from the council. So, we would give you So we would give you a regular commercial lease. It wouldn't even address relocation expenses. And then you can take up the issue when you consider the lease at your meeting in December.
Thank you for explaining that. For me, I think this council fully knows that we have the option to look at what's happened to these tenants. Just, I'm not placing blame on anyone. It's, there's risk in the world and it sounds like everyone's at some different level of risk here with where they are. But to get a lease, we know this option exists, this council does. We know that if we wanted to do something here, it's here. We have to look at the whole picture, in my opinion, and make a decision. This particular item is one that, if we really want to look at the big picture, is one that I wasn't overly excited about moving forward with in the first place because I felt that this should have been properly notified to the citizens through a workshop, sufficient workshop, and to get them involved and make sure that this was something that we wanted to do. And so when the city attorney says, man, it started here, now it's getting more complicated, this, to me, is a byproduct of moving too quickly. And I understand real estate happens. But for us, I'd like to hear from the rest of the council on the idea about getting the lease, taking what the city attorney said, we know we can take this option if we want. And so that's it. Councilmember, or Mayor Tim Kellum, anything?
I would like to hear from the people and where they are in all of this. If you guys wanted to step up, so. Okay.
Up to the mic and then just for the record, state your name, Poppy, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Now, it's a surprise. This came out of surprise to us. You know, the buy, the sale of the building, we had no idea where to go. Now, the thing is, it is true, you can open a can of worms for all the businesses. But this happened so rapidly. We've seen other spots where we were able to go, but we did not have the funding. Not a lot, just, you know, because this is our, this is.
Okay.
Our little.
Right.
You know, we pay our house or rent this, but.
My question is, if the council decides to give you money to move, how soon could you move?
We can make it real simple. For me, for Airport Studio, for me and Belinda, we would be out by the end of the year.
Okay.
By the end of the year because we've already lost spaces where we could go to put our barber shop along. But we didn't have the cash. Nobody had cash, you know? And first, last deposit, not a lot, just enough to, putting everything, we do our work ourselves because we already know the deal is done. But we have to move fast.
Right.
Because we're not going to wait a year.
No.
Everything goes quick.
Right.
You say real estate, all the spots that I had in mind when I knew about the sale, when I went, they were cutting the paper. It's already rented.
Right. My question, another question is, have you decided on a place that you could move into by the first of the year? Is it in our city?
Well, I think, Mayor Tim Kellum, I really think that's, respectfully, that's irrelevant to it. And I say that respectfully. I don't want to go down this path and I think, I just want to intervene here. See, this is, this is not a, we should not put ourselves in these discussions. We do not have to be here right now. Because what is going to happen is we're going to get, we're going to build hopes up. We're going to start moving down a direction to where ideas. And I think it's a mistake, it's a serious misstep to get this far down the road. Counsel, I am willing to come back. Let's get all the documents in front of us. Let's dig in and make a decision so that they can have some sort of closure and peace of mind on what we need to do. And for me.
It doesn't matter if they're going to be in the city or not. That wasn't my point. I was just wondering if they had a place in mind that if.
We've looked. Every time we have, we've been looking, like all the spots in Cape Canaveral. Either are too small or they do not have the access that we need. Sewer, plumbing.
Right.
Maybe anything else. And they're not suitable or too expensive and it's just me and Belinda.
Right. Well, my point is, what I was trying to say is, you know, the lease and like Anthony was saying, if we get to that point and, you know, we need a first reading, a second reading, we have a 30-day extension that we could do. If they're out before all that, we don't need a lease.
You're right about that.
Absolutely.
So my thing is, if we can agree to help them with first, last security and they have to move by January, why wouldn't we do that? And then get, so we don't need a lease, we don't need that headache, we don't need any of that. And that way, they know, okay, we have to be out by January 1st and this is how much money we're going to get. Or if you can, if you can find a place and you bring it to us and you say, I need $3,000 for first, last insecurity to move and I can do it by January 1st.
Well, remember this, remember this. When we got the place, you know, it had everything written for us. So all our investment we put into this.
Excuse me, could you speak into the microphone so you could be.
Thank you.
A new landlord comes and he'll raise your rent. Okay, so we'll have to pay $500 extra. But now when you have to put plumbing, maybe put down some walls, you know, get everything set up, get all your customers to come back to the new place.
Right.
It's very different when they're, when you have to leave. Because it's not, it was, we weren't thinking about the time. The first meeting, we were asking for a time, but we forgot.
Right.
We need a little bit of help so that we could just put this here, wherever we find it.
Well, the amount is, you know, we'd have to decide that, you know, base case by case. And also, the equipment that you have in this place now, the sinks and all that, you would be able, I'm wrong, I might be speaking out of turn, but that would be something you could take with you?
Oh, no, we bought all that.
Okay.
When we got the business, we bought everything inside.
Okay, gotcha.
So all our earnings were into that. So we came with no customer, no clientele. We build our clientele so we know that they would come, they would follow us.
Right.
You know, four years, you Google us, we got five stars. Shout out to the family.
No, I've heard so many good things about your business. I'm just, you know, we're trying to figure out what's best for the city and how we can help you, so.
Can I step in?
Sure.
Okay, well, I talked before, you guys already know who I am. But I'm telling you, if we had the money, we will not be here begging. It's, that's how I feel. We would just move on because really, like, I love my place, I love our place. We all do. But right now, it's been so much going on that really, I don't even want to be there. And I love my city. I would like to stay in Cape Canaveral, but all this isn't that you have to leave or whatever because we know we have to leave. Eventually, it's going to happen. That's all I can say. If we had the money, believe me, Nikki, we will not be here.
Gotcha.
And like I said last time, we don't want a lot of money. We just want whatever we need to move.
Right.
Or a little help at least. That's all.
But I gotta tell you something. It was very hard to see that, you know, when we saw the contract that the tenants had to be three to five days after closing date.
Yeah, that's not.
That was a punch in the gut.
No.
And then from there, then you start stressing, you start looking. And every spot that you had in mind, it's been taken. So the time doesn't even matter because Cape Canaveral is getting wrapped by big companies, big, you know, money. Money's coming to Cape Canaveral, so they're going to rent this here and there. So everywhere I looked, it, we could afford. It's already, like I told you, in front of our face.
Or we did, I'm sorry, we did find a place, but it was the second floor. Once again, I can't do it. I have ladies that come with the walker. You know, so it's not about finding a place, it's finding something suitable.
So I think we understand where you are. And I just, I have one question. Erase what's happened over the past 60 days. You're running your business. Life's.
We're saving every.
Right, that, would you today, I want to put in the scenario of business as usual. Would you stay in Cape Canaveral? Would you be happy had none of this came up? Or do you?
Of course.
Is the best location right there, just the way it was 90 days ago?
Remember this, yeah. When you're putting to a wall, you start looking.
No, I'm saying, no, I'm saying, when your business was, before all this, your business was running there. You've been there six, you're happy with Cape Canaveral?
Of course.
Business as usual. So is the best-case scenario that you stayed there and you stayed business as usual? You have to erase what's happened over the past 90 days. And I know life's changed, but that's my question. Okay?
It's very tricky.
Okay. No, let's do this. Thank you for your comments. If you don't mind, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item. And I think what we'll do is discuss it up here and if there's anything else, we'll let you know. But thank you very much. I think I'm clear on where you are. We understand the concern. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
I think I'm allowed. I have a question. About how much money do you need?
Well.
I don't know. I have no clue. You said you need a deposit and you need first month's rent, something like this?
To put everything in fairness, to put everything the way you need it, you know? First, last security is probably about four, probably a thousand for the plumbing. I would say six to seven, five, six, seven, whatever helps will be fine because right now we have nothing.
Okay. I'm just curious. And how much were you paying for the rent there?
We're paying $450.
$450?
Twelve fifty.
Twelve seventy-five with 22 cents. That's what we're paying.
Twelve seventy-five and 22 cents. All right, I just, I just wanted a ballpark figure. I had no clue.
Yes.
I had no clue. All right.
That's all we're asking.
Thank you.
A little bit of help.
A little bit of help.
I don't even know how to say it, but.
No, no, that's fair.
It goes different way now.
No, no, that really clarifies things. Thank you.
Yeah, we need to go ahead and move on. I want to, thank you very much. You will give a, I'll give you a chance, Smiley, to speak here in just a second. But we'll go ahead and clear, you move them up and have a seat now. We're just going to take up a little bit of, thank you. Yes, thank you. Appreciate it. So before Smiley looks like he would like to say comments, I'm going to just, kind of like a family up here, so I'm going to talk to you as business professional as we can, is I don't like where we are. I don't like this. And I think I would feel much more comfortable. I mean, when we start asking what your rents are, I mean, we are a local government. And now we're in the business of a landlord tenant. We're out there to call balls and strikes, not be in the business of landlords and tenants and get into that space. And I know CRAs are a tool where you can do that. But I think we're going to a place that I'm willing to get there. I would recommend that we bring this issue back and serious. We know the options. Let's bring it back. And one of the problems that we have that I'd like to see is a process change is we got 13 agenda items. We put so much on some of these agendas and some of them are lightweight and we move through them. But this, to me, I'm not, I don't like the direction this whole project's going. And I'm trying to figure out a way to make it work. But every time we get to the next meeting, there's more problems, it's more hurry. I think it's taken up a lot of our resources right now. We've got to get through two readings, we've got to get a lease signed, we've got to demolish, we got the bank, the money's in the bank. There's closing. And to me, if we can come back together in two weeks, I'll push down on this issue and try to give it. But honestly, if I had to make a decision today, I would say, let's, let's, let's put the brakes on this for right now. Because it's, to me, not where we should be right now as a level of priority. But I'm not saying that. What I will say is, if we want to meet, not in December, I don't like that. I think that puts us way down to the timeline. I'm willing to come back in a couple of weeks for a special meeting and drill down on the lease and do this. But today, I don't like it. I don't like having the conversation that we're going to be paying money out and becoming a landlord when honestly, this entire project, in my opinion, has just caused, I think, more headaches than we need right now.
Excuse me, I'd like to say, we don't need a lease. This is what, what the attorney said. We really don't need a lease. And that's what I think that our people are trying to say. We don't need a lease.
I mean, here's the driving force in all of this. And I don't disagree with anything that any of the council members or the mayor are saying. But the driving force is the council approved the contract to purchase this property. And we got a closing date. And we have binding terms and conditions under that contract. And we are trying to close the deal as stated in the contract. And any real estate closing, anybody who does it for a living will tell you there are bazillion issues leading up to closing. In this particular case, you know, you have some loose ends that have to be completed. We got two existing tenants. They may or may not be there at closing. I don't know. We're hearing that one of them may not be. So, you know, we're working up towards a closing date. You know, the city's done a lot of the due diligence, it's already been completed. Survey's been done, the environmental's been done. I mean, the city's moving towards this closing date. And we need to get a few other ducks in a row. And, you know, this is one of them, dealing with the two, with the two tenants. You either need a lease if they're going to be there for a short period of time after closing or you don't need a lease if they're not going to be in the building at the time of closing. We need to know. And, you know, we're all, eventually, it all comes together. But it's, we're working towards closing. And you do have some outstanding issues that you have to address. There's another one, the interlocal agreement has to do internally with who funds the payment of the loan that's already been closed. Right? That's an internal issue for you all in the CRA to decide. You know, maybe you need to have that extra meeting so you can see all of these issues that we're trying to wrestle with to close this deal. Because there's some outstanding issues on your plate, perhaps with the lease and the interlocal. Maybe it'd be better for the council to see all of these issues together and see the big picture and what we're trying to do here, trying to implement what the council decided in that contract.
And that's, I understand. Without a lease, there's still going to be some sort of consideration for making a payment. But there's a list of due diligence items that need to happen. We've got the loan to service and satisfy. And for me, I think we could have a session of total immersion and start at the beginning and work through and give staff everything that they need to make a decision and get this put behind us, one way or the other. I think that that's what I'm proposing.
We just need a little help so that we can grow.
Yep. We can't comment from the audience, but no, that's okay. We just want to make sure we understand where you are. Thank you. So I move that honest, either we, we, I don't think we should take any action on this tonight. That's where I am with this. I think it's a mistake to get into anything. I'm not saying no for assistance. I'm not saying yes. I'm saying we should look at the lease and see the other items that the city's having, that we need to see. I'm not asking to see more than we need. And then we can decide whether or not what we want to do. But it's hard to see when you're only looking at little parts of the picture at what's at stake here. So I. if we wanna do it in December, fine, I'm willing to meet a couple of weeks prior. But I wanna be respectful of staff's time.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, it, it would help staff tremendously if we could hear from Smiley. Um, because, um, what I've heard from the airport was they need a minimum of five thousand dollars, and they could be out by the closing date of twelve twenty-seven. If that's true for Smiley, that makes a, that's an important data point for us. If this, if it's the same for Smiley, it'll help, it'll assist us a lot. So I, I would like to hear from him if it, if it pleases the mayor.
Yes, absolutely. I plan on hearing. Um, council, any other questions before we go to Smiley at this time?
I think, I think the staff has organized most of this. So I think that this is just one piece that's left. So I think we do need to hear from Smiley, too.
Yes. Smiley, if you would, I didn't forget about you, my friend. I just, thank you.
My name is Michael. Um, I've been in Cape Canaveral for almost eight, eight years, where my business, I started my business here in Cape Canaveral. I've been growing up with the city. I love the city. I would like to stay in the city, you know? Um, when everything starts, I mean, I had no idea what's happening, everybody saying something. Um, I'm willing to stay in, in the city, because I love the city, I like, I mean, it's, I've been growing up with the city. Um, right now it's kinda hard situation. I mean, I don't wanna be in this situation. Um, unfortunately, the city bought the place, was gonna do the closing, and I'm in the middle of this situation. Same thing for me, if I had the money to move, I mean, I would not be standing over here tonight. You know? But at this point, I mean, um, I'm agree with some stuff and the puppy that Herrpo studio's saying. Uh, but for me, it's kinda different situation. I mean, I'm in there and that spot for almost eight years, and that changed everything. I mean, I'm feeling like in this position, I'm kinda going out of business, you know? Because what's happening right now. Um, same thing, I'm not asking for too much, I'm not asking, I'm asking for fair. You know, and for fair to my business, my family, eh, it's, that's my point. I want, I'm, and I appreciate everybody trying to help us. Because I know you guys have the decision to say, no, you know what, you just got, we did the closing, you gotta, gotta, you gotta go. And I understand that. But we, we, um, we are part of the community. I'm part of the community. Uh, I've been helping a lot of people in the community. And same thing, I mean, I need a place where everybody can go, first, first floor, that everybody can go and have access to, to help people. I mean, helping a lot of people, a lot of people, eh, eh, same thing, I have high stars for you. I mean, I'm, do my best for all my customers. Uh, if you guys have any questions, I would like to answer those questions. Uh, but for me, uh, the amount of money that Papi and I'm asking is not gonna help me. Because I have more equipment, I have a lot of things to do, I have to move. It cost me five years to put this store the way it is right now. Five years. Because I started my business with a little boy, and I have to grow up my business, working thirteen, fourteen hours a day over there, every single day. You see, I, I, I appreciate everybody to help us. But I want you, you guys to be fair with us. Any questions?
Thank you. I don't have any questions, and we've had a...
Mayor? Mayor, I, I would ask a couple of questions, if I may.
Please.
Could, if, if we were to agree on an amount of dollars, could you vacate the premises by the closing date of twelve twenty-seven?
With no problem.
Thank you. And do you have an idea of what that number would be for you?
I would say ten thousand dollars would be helping to move. If, I, I mean, it's not just about moving my furniture. I had to, uh, advertising, I had to, uh, move my stuff. I had to be close for weeks, you know, to, to organize the other place, to relocate. I have, it's, 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 it's not as easy as we saying right now to move a business. If somebody has a business, they're gonna understand how hard it is to move a business. And also, as the people that know me, that I've been there for years, they're gonna go over there and look for me. And when they see me over there, they're gonna decide if they wanna go to the next place that where I'm gonna be. And that's hard to...
Thank you, Mayor. That answers my question.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Smiley. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Council, we've got an item, a discussion item for action before us, which is to discuss, these people are operating their businesses for two months. They get a notice that the city wants to buy it. Suddenly, everything coming off of a very tough COVID year changes for them. As we heard, uh, life became, you know, you kind of probably felt like an insect in a spider web at times where you're just being, your next-door neighbors wanna acquire you. And from the beginning, my position has been that this is not the highest and best use of our time and resources within the city, the priorities. So for me, I think the, the best-case scenario, my, the best-case scenario is, is that they stay exactly where they are. But we, I can't, I can't under, I can't get on board with, with anything because my mind can't get past, I think that this project i- is something that, that the citizens would have to prove to me. I'm not convinced that the citizens want to do this project. And so, if the council would want to do a workshop with the citizens, I think that we could prove me wrong or prove right. I just wanna go through that step. And so I'm gonna stay principled to my original thing and to say, we created this problem for ourselves. We did not have to be in this situation. We have higher priorities to be focusing on. This is not something that I think we should be using up valuable resources in the final stage. Two businesses are getting displaced. Citizens are losing places where they can get their haircut. Citizens are losing places where they can get their tech report, or their, their technical devices supported. So, it, yes, it's hard for me to get down and to say, well, how much, you know, can we pay out? And that's, that's just being as direct as I can on this. If we are going to, to try to consider something, uh, you know, that, I, I would say they have definitely been impacted in a negative way. So my heart says, in any scenario, it would be very easy for me to justify doing something for these two businesses, in any scenario, because of just the turmoil for the past few months that we've put them through and the, the lost sleep or whatever else they've gone through. So I, I don't want you to hear me say, do nothing. But the scenario I'm leaning towards is, honestly, can we please do a workshop? Because I'm not scared of anything that's in our way to, to change directions or do whatever we need to do. That's how serious I am about this project. And frankly, I think that the citizens will be very, if you can just look at my emails, look at the people who's talked, they're not excited about this project. And it's just causing more pain. It, in every single day, to, right up till Christmas, I think it's gonna continue down that path. So that's, that's my concern, yes.
Mr. Mayor, and with all due respect, and I do understand your opinion, I have been to meetings prior to getting on the council. And I do understand that you have been against this project, and I respect that. But the bottom line is, this council voted to buy this property. This is the position we're in. I don't think we can back off of that. The city will be, will be penalized, we will have funds, our rating, our credit. You know, I don't know how much in penalties we would have. I don't think this is something we can back out. The council legitimately voted to do this. So now we are in the position, whether I like it or not, I mean, we are in this position and we have to decide what to do. Are you asking to, to back out of the sale of this property?
I, I'm not asking. No, I'm telling...
I just wanted to make sure I understood that, because I don't see...
You bring up very, you bring up very good points that I would love to know the answer to. How much would it cost in fees to get out? And, and I know we may not be comfortable having that conversation today, but I'm willing to have it. And I know it's not great news for council members who I think did want it, but I did not vote for this project.
I understand that, but it was passed.
I get your point. We are, we're now dealing with a past object, but I don't think it's over. I, I think that there's always a path forward.
Well, then...
There's always a path, so, yeah, and that, and that's, that's a question I'd love to know. The money's in the bank, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yes, sir.
Uh, one point three million dollars is in the bank?
One point two.
What, what is recourse and what does that look like? Maybe you'll spook me off from that, but...
I, I'll be glad to answer that, and John, you can add to it if I get anything wrong. Um, we have, um, loan origination costs of fifty thousand dollars. We've got a prepayment penalty of two percent if we pay early, that is defined as within two years. That's twenty-four thousand, that's up to seventy-four thousand now. We've got, uh, survey and environmental assessment fees of approximately thirty-five hundred dollars. And we've got attorney's fees for the title work that has been done. So all in, we're about at eighty thousand dollars. Um, and as, um, the council member mentioned, returning the money comes with, um, a number of unknown risks to the city's future bond rating and credit rating. Um, because this was a very specific purpose loan that was approved. Um, we can't spend the money for anything else. Um, the, to return it would, um, would have a number of negative effects that I, I can't even imagine. But I'll ask, if you don't mind, I can ask John DeLeo to, to talk about that.
And I don't expect John to know that right now, but I would love to know. And, and frankly, one point seven million dollars is what this project slated to do. Eighty thousand dollars to save one point seven doesn't scare me one single bit.
Well, there's a...
And I would mark it up to a hundred thousand to, to, to say that they, they would still need some sort of unsorry compensation for what was gone through, but that's...
Mayor, respectfully, with, uh, staff's time, and yes, like you saying about compensating them, it's well over a hundred thousand dollars. The implications are, my financial planner could not be here tonight. Uh, but the implications are really severe because if you wanna go out for capital notes again, and I have to go to ten banks, they go to history. They're gonna see this, I have to explain it, and forget about getting a good interest rate of one point sixty-one. Because they will not have confidence. The, our credibility in the city will be affected. It's just like anything, you know? You have a business deal, things go amok, people don't have confidence in you. They're not gonna give you the business, or they're not gonna give you the best rate. I could tell you that right now, and that's just on anything. Um, to turn things around, um, you know, uh, to leave the people in the building, it sounds to me like, I mean, if we remain landlords, something else you have to understand is council has to take in effect. These folks, if they, they stay in there, we're landlords, they have to pay their rent. This is taxpayer dollars. This, we aren't a private entity, we're public. These are taxpayer dollars. And I, I don't know how the taxpaying citizens of this city are gonna feel if the city is allowing businesses to stay in a tenant landlord owned by the city situation and not paying the rent, not paying the rent, and it's hitting the city, city, citizens' taxes. So that's just another angle of this, but there's, there is a lot to consider here. Um, I can't tell you the implications of, more implications of giving the loan back. That has, that has bad connotations for the future.
Thank you, John.
We are in a position, and we are, we are in a position, the city is in a good financial position. I mean, the fact that we have a CRA that's gonna pay this whole debt off over ten years at a hundred and thirty K a year, that, with the city doesn't even have to flinch because the debt is paid by the CRA, it's not costing the city anything. Now, the mayor says it's a one point seven million dollar project. That's correct, that's correct. Um, but, um, that's where council has to determine, is this project important enough to the city, uh, to, to continue on? And I think from a financial aspect and rating or whatever, it would be a bad idea, a bad idea to back out of this. And that's from my professional financial opinion. And there's probably even more to this that we haven't even discussed and will look into that's gonna affect the overall situation, so.
Sure. That, I wouldn't expect you to know how to quantify the impact that this would have on us. And I agree with, uh, Councilmember Davis that we have to think about that. But that is exactly what I would propose that this council does, is we hear things like bad and turmoil. Can we define, in the next fo-, by the end of the week, we've got a hundred thousand kinda slated? Todd, I was very impressed with how fast you rattled off the numbers to get to eighty thousand. To me, what would it do to our credit rating? What would it do to our, if we can, if this council desires in, in reasonable time, I'd like to be able to look at something more concrete and really say it because I'm that serious about it. Because the real turmoil to me is that citizens' houses have water issues, lights. I'm seeing them getting fixed, I'm excited. But there are seri-, there are other issues that we need to focus on in the city. That's my position, and I'll deal with the citizens. That's our job. We gotta face that turmoil. And I can tell you, it's not free money, it's not bonus money. The CRA is taxpayer money. And just because it would have normally went to the county, doesn't mean that we could just recklessly have a, a, a spending spree. We're losing two businesses, we're losing a property off the tax roll. We've heard the pains of what we've put them through. To replace it with a park, when we have a lot of parks and we've got more issues, that's where I am. I might get back and say, you know what, it does cost too much. But that's where I am. I'd like to hear what the council thinks about getting some quantifiable numbers on what this financial impact would be.
I'd like to say one more thing about the CRAs. I'm concerned that what this will do to our CRAs and if we will ever be able to work with this in the future, if we blow this now. And I think the other thing is, we've been taking care, and you know, Mayor, that we have been voting five-zero on every wastewater and stormwater. Every time we have an upgrade to our wastewater plant, we all vote for it. We're very much in favor. We're getting millions of dollars from the American Rescue Plan. And that's going, all of it, just about all of it, one hundred percent, is going into our wastewater plant and stormwater. We're doing these things. I'm very much in favor of doing the presidential streets. We're going to get it done. We are going to get it done. This plan is not a brand-new plan. You can talk to previous council members, and they will tell you that this plan about buying this property has been in existence for years, years. They've been trying to get that property for years, so that we can have a civic hub, so that we have a beautiful campus. I think it's something that we're all going to be proud of. And I think we really do need to move forward on this. I do not want our bond rating and our bank and the relationships that we have with the different banks and the CRA and the county to, to, you know, be compromised. And this is what this will do if we back out on this.
And that's a statement that I wanna find out. You're saying it's gonna hurt our bond rating, hurt our relationships?
Yes, I'm worried about it.
Can we verify that? Do you, does this council wanna verify that? Because what if we find out it's not gonna hurt our bond rating? You're handing the money right back. We pay that, they get their fees, right? They get paid out fifty thousand and that, and so I think that they have the penalties baked in. But all I wanna do is not speculate, is to, to figure out, how much is this gonna cost? Because I think it's a valid concern. And we are, the stormwater, we haven't even gotten the bill and the engineering to fix that, the, 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 we don't know how much those problems are gonna cost. And my concern is, we're gonna go now twenty, over twenty-one million in approved debt. And the next thing you know, the real issues start hitting, property taxes start to decrease. We know it's gotta go down, and here we are now. We got real problems and we can't fix them, but boy, we got a nice park. I, I don't wanna be in that situation. And I'd rather spend one point seven million dollars and, and fix these other priorities.
And we already are.
I beat that to death, I'm not saying any more about it.
That's already in the budget. It's already in the budget to take care of the stormwater and wastewater project.
We, we haven't got the bill yet on that, so. And, Council, Mayor Per Tim Callum, Councilmember Willis, anyone?
This, this is a very hard...
Um, this, this is a very hard decision. I, I have to agree with some things that Mayor said. You know, this is an unintended consequence of taking on this project and pushing it through so fast. I, I would agree, but we can't keep these people hanging on either. They have to make decisions in their life. I would like to see maybe a meeting quickly to give the city a chance to bring our back of the numbers on exactly how much this would cost. I agree with, you know, there are so many other things that need to be done in the city. Yes, we have the money for stormwater, but then there's down the road, maintenance for these parks and employees that we have to hire and things that, you know, that we don't think about now. It's like, yes, 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 we want this. And to clarify, at the strategic planning meeting, when we got the summary of it, there was one vote for this to be happening now, one out of us. And there was, the presidential master plan was a five-O vote. It was never a five-O vote to, to move forward with this right now. It was presented to us, what about this? Would you like to do this? Yeah, sounds good. It was never brought that we, we have to take out a one point seven million dollar loan to do this. So I think it got pushed through quickly. I understand the real estate implications of it, but, you know, did we take into consideration what these people are gonna go through? Or, you know, they pay taxes, they pay business taxes, they pay, you know, sales tax, whatever. And also, you know, we're at one point seven million dollars of the taxpayers' money, and now we're gonna add paying these tenants to move? I just think it's, there's so much involved. You know, I, I'm not against it, I'm against it right now, and I don't know if we can turn it around, if it's too late, if it's gonna cost us way too much money. I, I understand that too, but I just, you know, everybody I've talked to, and you guys campaigned, I don't know how many people that I was talking to said they, they don't want this, they don't want it right now. You know, we're finishing the multi-generation center, we're, we're working on the culture center, we have a lot of awesome parks. You know, we can go over this and over and over it. I just think if we could put the brakes on for, there's an opening date for December seventh, that we could come back and discuss this, have all the, have all the numbers, and make a final decision for these people, for the city, and move on one way or the other on that date, I would be for that.
December seventh, you said?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's an excellent idea. We take it to a close, everyone gets finality shortly after that, and we make a decision. Councilmember Willis, if anything.
I have a question for Mr. DeLeo. Could you talk to the financial, your financial advisor for the city and give us his expert opinion on what this would do to us if we were to back out of the deal?
I will do that tomorrow.
Okay. And I think if we could have that information for the potential December seventh meeting, along with the lease agreement, if we choose to have a lease agreement, but at least be able to see it, and then weigh what it would cost to provide for these current tenants to go be out by closing. We weigh all of that in that December seventh and make a decision on it.
So Councilmember Willis, I just want to summarize those points. We'd like to know.
I want to know the negative impact.
Yep, the financial impact of recourse.
Not that, don't take this the wrong way, not that you're not giving us a professional opinion, I wanted another opinion, an additional opinion.
Well, that's what we pay a financial planner for, for the city, to advise and consult. So yeah, I'll do that, I'll do that for you.
All right.
Financial impact, one. The, the second thing you talked about was a lease if it's an option, is that right?
I want to see it.
Yep.
I want to see it.
So see the draft lease, item two.
We can either opt to bypass a lease altogether based upon what we might or might not be willing to pay the current tenants to be vacated by closing.
So the financial impact, the draft lease, and what was the, was there a third one?
Yes, the, what we would be willing possibly to pay.
For the tenants.
For the relocation of the tenants.
Okay, and then I would add a fourth to that, that says in anything else this staff thinks we should know about.
I just think we should have a summary minutes of this item on that date as well, from tonight.
On the December seventh?
Yes.
Okay, so if, if December, no, I'm not, I'm just summarizing what happened.
I think you're doing a good job summarizing or the council's putting the issues on the table, but the issue of repaying the loan and suffering the consequences of that only can occur if you can get out of the sale and purchase contract, because you need that, you need the funding to complete the closing. So really, what you're saying is, and I think I've, I, Mayor, I think your point is doing a one-eighty and undoing the contract, if it's even possible.
So put that one at the number one, is the sale and purchase contract we've executed, what are the terms to?
Because that's driving everything, that's the, that's the big white elephant in the room, because we're all marching towards closing based on a contract that was duly approved by the council, and, and that's what's driving us to all these other issues. Can't get out of, I mean, you're stuck with, if you're stuck with the contract, you know, I don't know what to tell you, I mean, you gotta fund, you gotta fund the purchase.
Give it a read, and tomorrow, give us an, could you update the council with an opinion?
I'll, I'll be happy to look at it, it's not gonna be tomorrow, but it's, it will be prepared to address that when you all meet, if not sooner, but it, it is the critical path.
If John is gonna go do work and all that, and it all rides on that.
Right, well, John, right, well, John's gonna ask the finance, financial advisor as to his, his opinion about, I think.
If we repay.
Expeditiously repaying a one point three million dollar loan and all the implications, if any, you know.
Yeah, and we don't, and, and, and to buy the building, we, we, the one point two million dollars, which we aggressively went ahead and did all our due diligence to get to one point two million at one point six-one percent, we needed the loan to even do the deal. So there is no, you know, there's no nine hundred thousand dollars sitting in the, in the CRA, that's the one point two million that's gonna fund that. So that's why the attorney is stating that make sure that the closing of this, the, the contract is, you know, if you can't get out of the contract, we need the one point two million dollars.
Okay, so four items, or, or five, number one, the sale and purchase contract, what are the termination clauses, whatever that is, right? And whenever you're, I, I would not want to wait till the next December third Tuesday meeting. I'm hoping that we could, in reasonable time, get something back over, and, and.
I thought it was December seventh.
It, now, okay, now that, that's better, but.
Right, it's, we can.
And we have that contract, or, I mean, we all, that, that contract was executed, and so that's gonna, can you at least send out a signed, the signed version? And if it didn't change, I'll just go and look at the old one.
We'll, we'll include it in the, the agenda for the December seventh meeting, if that's what you're asking.
I'm just gonna look at it tomorrow, myself. It's in, it'll be in the agenda packet from the September meeting, right? That's when we, we executed that.
It hasn't changed.
It has not changed, okay.
Dave, would you send it to council?
So the September agenda packet has that, just to, to become.
Well, you want to take a look at the executed contract, because at the council meeting, the council rejected the provision about having the tenants vacate prior to closing, so I think that paragraph might have, I'm not sure.
Yeah, but that's not a term that I'm gonna be looking at for the conditions today.
I'm just telling you that if you want the final contract, you need to look at, you should look at the executed contract, which should be, is on file, so.
One change.
Send it, send it, send, you know, clerk should be able to get that to everybody, who can see it.
Yes, Dave.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I just, I will, I will, per Todd's instructions, I'll get that out to the council tomorrow, first thing. And I'll, in my email, I'll kind of point you in the direction of some, perhaps in my opinion, what you should be really looking at, and, and as, as the city attorney has discussed, you know, we have a executed agreement contract between ourselves and the seller, and, you know, I'm not a real estate attorney, but I will say that, you know, we, there, there are some obligations for a, a buyer and a seller with a signed contract, and I will point you in the direction of the due diligence that we are required to do per the contract, and, and perhaps things that if they don't work out like we anticipate, then we can back out of the contract. There are other things that we legally perhaps cannot back out of the contract, and, but, but I'll, I'll focus you on those sections and, because it's a lengthy contract and it can get overwhelming, so I'll do that as part of the email tomorrow. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember.
I have one more comment.
Okay.
When we talked about this in September, we had the financial consultant came and gave us, talked about the state of the city, and explained to us that we were on, were on a very good financial footing in the city, and that we could definitely do this, and that's one of the reasons why he said, he thought that the city and the staff did due diligence on projects such as this. And as I said, this is something that it didn't just come up for ten years, more than ten years, I understand that the city's been trying to get this piece of property, so it isn't anything that just came up in the last few months. This is true, but I mean, as far as the consultant, he very, very clearly explained to all of us that we were in such a good position for this, so I just have to state that again. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
I agree that we need to get all the information as to where we stand, if there are any implications that it's gonna cost us over a hundred thousand dollars, if it's gonna affect our rating, our, our bond, then I can just say that I will be against it. You know, if the citizens are unhappy that we purchased this, I don't think they're gonna be happy that we just threw a hundred thousand dollars, or whatever the amount may be, away either. That's a lot of money just to, because certain, you know, you don't like that we purchased the property, or, didn't mean you particular, I'm saying in general that the property was purchased. So that's a lot of money to throw away when it has already been voted on and by a competent council. So I'm just, where I stand, I would not be in agreement for wasting, in my eyes, wasting the money for penalties. And then we would have, we would deal with what we could do with the tenants.
I, I also think that a project like this, just like the multi-gen facility, it raises our property values, it raises it. We're, this, this is on A1A, and I mean, it's very notable to the public, and I think that, you know, it's something that we could all be proud of.
So.
And these are good things for our property values.
Sometimes I think that, that I, I give off the impression that I think we're in bad financial position. I've, I'm not, I do not think that the city of Cape Canaveral is in a bad financial position. I am arguing that if we're gonna take one point seven million dollars, I can tell you five other things that I'd rather spend that money on, and when those things are fixed, let's go buy a park. That's been my message from day one. But yet, these projects get through, and now we're going, hey, one hundred thousand dollars or one point seven, that's less than ten percent? I want to talk to the taxpayers, and I might agree with you, and I might agree with you. That's the other problem, we haven't even talked to the citizens of this community. Yes, I talked to a council member that said that this was property was something they pursued, and it goes far back. I've also talked to council members that said we wanted the sidewalks done that goes far back, that they want streetlights working that goes far back. There's lots of projects that go far back, so I think we are approaching this in a very professional way. I might fully be convinced that this is a bad idea, and today, I'm neutral on it, so to get the legal opinion, the financial impact, the draft lease, and the order that, that I think staff sees in a pri- as a priority, and the relocation expenses, and any other items, I think to meet at December seventh, if I'm understanding, Mayor Pro Tim Callum is a, is the recommended next step, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I need a motion first to schedule a meeting on December seventh. Let's get that pushed through, and then we can just build consensus and direct staff, or we can do it all together, but.
I'll make a motion that we bring this back at a meeting on December seventh, with all the information from the staff.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Callum, and a second by Councilmember Willis, to schedule a December seventh meeting to discuss the items we went over tonight. We are technically in discussion period now. Do you need me to list those items off to you, Todd, or do you want to?
I can read them off my notes, because this is the note, the list I'll be giving to staff, perhaps this is the one that counts.
Okay.
On the December seventh meeting, we want to have the city attorney's opinion on canceling the contract.
Mm-hmm.
We want to have the city financial advisor's opinion on returning the loan and what the impacts of that could be. We want to have minutes reflecting the comments made here tonight, including the asks of the tenants regarding relocation expenses, and we want to include the draft lease.
And any other items that you feel that we should know about?
Got it.
Okay, that's, but, is that, is, council understood it? That sounds accurate to me. Okay, and with that, no other, no further discussion? Good. So the motion is to schedule the meeting on December seventh?
At what time?
Six P.M.
What, what day of the week is that? Is that a Tuesday?
Tuesday.
I, I think six works, for me, yep. Six P.M., okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the motion is to schedule a December seventh meeting here at City Hall at six P.M. to discuss the items that the city manager listed tonight, and, and council confirmed as being accurate. Got a, a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Callum, and a second from Councilmember Willis. Mia, if you don't need anything else, please call the roll.
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Callum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Thank you all, the motion passes five-O to essentially try to draw this to a close and make a well-informed decision, so, thank you. And yes, thank you all for your comments. The, okay, so at this time, we are, we're at nine oh nine P.M., keeping an eye on the clock.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
Frequently in the past council, I don't know if you want to do it for this council, but at eight o'clock, we would take a recess in case.
Let's do it.
Okay.
I love it. I don't think I need, but I, what do you think? Ten minutes, five minutes?
Five.
Let's do a, let's do a five-minute, is that good? Five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we're all back here, call this meeting back to order. Wow, that worked, that worked, thank you. So now we are moving on to the, it worked. I've been, yeah, I've been playing over here, and this thing has magic. Yeah, thank y'all. Discussion item number eleven is where we are here, this is the second last one, discussion on the American Rescue Plan Act and review the proposed projects to determine how best to use this fiscal recovery funds. This is just a discussion item, council's looking for some, this, some, I think, some direction, our staff, they've made a proposal, thank you very much, you put some numbers together, it looks like we've received two point six million roughly of the five point two, and with that, I'll, I'll yield and let our city manager.
As you can see in the draft spreadsheet, we're not totally spending anything in the two to the point one. However, in the, in the current fiscal year, starting at point one-two, we do. However, in the, in the current fiscal year, starting in 2022, we do want to start utilizing some of these, these funds. One of the things right off the bat, we want, we would like to do and are proposing to do is $16,000 premium pay essential workers. That is specifically for the overtime that the Canaveral Fire Rescue put into the distribution of vaccines and administering of that. There's no other premium pay or essential workers money that we're asking for beyond that. We did talk about a 10% for unspecified qualified community needs. Now, there's no magic behind that number. And in fact, it was, it was my idea that we throw it out there more as a talking point because we, we haven't yet had any discussion about community needs and ARPA funding. ARPA funding does allow for a certain amount of, of community needs, but we would need to know, here's some feedback from the council if there, if there's desire to develop some of those programs. But the main thing I want to point to here is the wastewater and stormwater projects. The, the needs that we project in wastewater and stormwater are going to far exceed the, the ARPA monies. For example, you know, we've been talking about this long-range project of a deep injection well, which we're hearing could be up to $11 million. I think we, we hope that it's going to come in less than that. And that, that's something we would have to do to comply with the EP regulations for zero discharge to the, the River of Treated Affluent. And yes, we are also continuing negotiations and discussion with the city of Cocoa Beach, possibly a lot partnering on that too. So that could affect that. But I think the big picture takeaway from this spreadsheet is we could easily spend all the ARPA money on a bad stormwater project alone. But whatever we don't spend on the ARPA money will, I mean, for the, we'll have to make it up somewhere else. So this is just a, a discussion point. We wanted to get started. First question in my mind is, are we okay with the $16,000 for essential pay for the CFR? If we, if we are, we could perhaps have a motion for that. If we are okay with having a certain amount of money put aside for, for community needs and maybe having a future talk about what those community needs are as maybe you're talking to your constituents and you're coming back with ideas and is 10% a good number for that? Or is that too high? Is that too low? And then if we could, the third thing I would ask is, is the council okay with whatever's left after those two items are decided going towards the stormwater wastewater projects? That's the easiest way to look at this. John, would you like to add anything to that?
No, that's, that's really the extent of it right now. And, and some of the other things that are involved with ARPA money actually don't affect or wouldn't come across in our city. I won't get into those things. But there's a lot, I will say this though. There's a lot of discussion going on in Washington on these funds. And the Senate a month ago voted on additional things maybe to spend this on. Then there's additional, then it says, we just, we just attended a webinar via our auditors who are all over this. And the things we have listed here, mainly the stormwater and of course the premium pay for workers, we're in the clear on that. When I say that is, we really can't like reimburse this stuff right now. This is still, there's still a lot of discussion on this. But those two items, council could be confident, we could spend the money on that. We keep getting more and more information. I have my staff attending every possible briefing on this and everybody's got a briefing on this. And so we're staying on top of it. But as far as the qualified, specified qualified community needs, actually, as the city manager said, there's going to be other things that may be identified now that the Senate's talking about. So that might get included and maybe fall in that bucket. Okay, so that's about everything.
And I would just add, this is a good problem to have, having this money to spend and deciding where to spend it. I, I like bringing these items to you, Mayor.
Yes.
One last item, Mayor, if I will.
Yes, please.
Um, we need to identify, just identify how we intend to spend this money by April 1st. Okay, that gives staff plenty of time to, to respond to the state or the government or whoever at this point. So as you deliberate between now and, you know, it'd be nice if sometime in March, there's a decision by council that says, yes, spend this money here, spend that money there, then I have to tell, I have to tell the government where we're spending our money. That's all.
Thank you very much. And the good news with the April 1st headline is that's after our strategic planning.
That's true.
Meeting. Now that my time, it might not time out right because you might have a lot of work to do on how to report. I don't know. But it sounds like we have time. Todd, I just want to repeat back your request is premium pay for essential workers. You have proposed $16,000.
The overtime amount that CFR has incurred.
Okay, so that would fully reimburse?
Yes.
There.
Mr. Mayor, I have already received an invoice from the fire chief for 15,000, like 15,624 dollars. And he, he understands that he's willing to wait on the ARPA money. The fire department has compensated them for that and they know they'll be reimbursed. This is one thing that will definitely be reimbursed. That's one thing they're doing for, for the workers working overtime and stuff like this premium pay. So I've worked with the fire department already and it's just a matter of writing them a check two or three months from now.
Okay, got it. So that was the first thing. That seems like the, the easiest one to, to make a decision on. The second one was the wastewater and stormwater or there was one?
The second one was to have a discussion about the community needs.
Okay.
And really, this, this is a longer conversation that you're going to want to have with your constituents.
Okay.
About what those needs are that could be and could qualify. So that's a back and forth that we're going to have to have. There's probably going to be emails. You know, hey, Todd, I got, you know, Dr. Joe says he'd like to have his medical license reimbursed, blah, blah, blah. Whatever they are. And then we'll have that discussion. Is that a qualified need? Is it not? And then we'll develop a program for qualified needs. And we'll have a better understanding about what are qualified needs in the community. But for tonight, what I'd like to know is, are we comfortable with the amount of being 10% for that? Do we want to move that up? Do we want to move that down? That's the second question.
Mm-hmm. And then the third one was the wastewater and stormwater. You listed a few projects and just to kind of, you're looking just for some preliminary feedback. You took a blank piece of paper, you put some numbers down.
Yep.
And it's the inertia phase. Okay, I'll be quiet. I think I just wanted to restate for the council. So we hear number one, premium pay for essential workers at 16,000. Number two, community needs, that's going to take some times and eventually develop a program. And then number three is to look at the wastewater and stormwater projects with the overall goal of giving.
Anything else going there?
Giving the council feedback. So if anyone wants to jump in first?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea and definitely the 16,000. And I'm, I can make a motion right now if you want me to.
Well, that's good. Let's, let's, I'm for it too, by the way.
And the rest go into stormwater and wastewater. I think it's great.
Okay.
Perfect for us.
Councilmember Davis, are you?
No, I'm fine with it and I agree that the, the fire department definitely gives them the money and everything else is good.
Okay. Councilmember Willis?
I'm fine with it. Very much often studying that.
10%, what we would be doing with that for, for sure. But as it is, it looks good to me.
Thank you.
I agree. I think the, definitely the 16,000 to the fire department is important and the qualified cu, community needs at 10% is excellent. And I, I'm, you know, we have till April 1st. And did you say April 1st, John?
Yes.
The strategic planning will be behind us and also our revisioning that's coming up will also help us decide what community, what the community needs are and, and what programs we can work out of that. So I, I agree. And the $11 million for the deep water well is really scary. So if, you know, we could save the money towards that, that would be.
A whole new meaning to deep pockets. That's outrageous.
Mayor, if I may, to summarize, I, I sense that there's consensus on this discussion item to move forward as we proposed. I would ask the council to, to talk to your constituents about what those needs are that are COVID-related. That's what this, the impact is supposed to address of this. And then John, continue to keep the council informed as we learn about what are qualified community needs. And perhaps what we could do is just schedule another discussion item on this to bring back everything we've learned, say in January, February, and just regroup at that point after we've learned what we've learned at that point.
That sounds good. And if anyone opposed to that plan? Seeing none, I think we've got consensus.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, also I talked to our chief auditor and none of this, and he's all over this. None of this is moving quickly. So just, we've got time and, but nothing is moving quickly here. And there's deliberations on transportation and different business needs that now are coming up. And so we'll, we're, we're learning more about that. So I'll let you know.
And, and two other things before we close this. The 10% for qualified community needs is $262,196.90 now. That's with the first tranche we've received. There's a second tranche that's due by October 1st?
Uh, the, the second tranche cannot be paid no sooner than 12 months from the first tranche, which in this case is October, yes.
So we're looking at roughly October, maybe later, but there's another $262,196 at that point. So all, all in for 10% qualified community needs, we're at $520,000.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
So if we, the 10% we leave in there for community needs and programs as we see come along and then the next trench comes in, if, if it's designated for that, does it have to stay there? I mean, is there something?
We can amend our plan as necessary. What they want to see is that we have a plan by April 1st.
Okay.
And it can be amended.
All right.
Thank you. That's, that's the clarity we need, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. If there's no other discussion, I'm ready to move on to the, the one we've been waiting for, the final discussion item.
Excuse me, do we make a motion?
I don't think.
A motion about the $16,000?
I asked.
Um, we've recorded consensus on this and that's enough.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, good. No, good. Okay, final discussion item is the add-on agenda item that we put on, Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tim Kellum requested this about short-term rentals, I think, working off the response of Kay Jackson's poet comment. So Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, I, I, before Ms. Jackson had made her comments, in the last couple of weeks, I've got a lot of calls from residents and about ProChamps and what's happening. I had emailed Dave and, and Todd. And I think it's time for us to have a discussion about, it seems to me that we're not on the same page with ProChamps. This, one person who contacted me about the listings on VROV or VRBO or whatever it is, they're all, they're renting for less than seven days still. And this was the main reason and why this was so important to the residents is they want to enforce the seven-day rental. This lady called to make a complaint about a seven-day rental. The lady on the phone told her, she said, do you want to make it anonymous? And the lady said, we're not supposed to do that. And the lady from ProChamps said, yes, you can. So now it comes in as an anonymous complaint and it, does it get to the city? Where's it going? I just think that, you know, their scope of work and the things that are supposed to be happening are maybe not happening. So I was hoping that we could, staff could put together maybe a meeting with ProChamps and us and code enforcement or, I mean, the whole idea of this ordinance was to enforce the seven days. And now people are, they're saying they don't know about it. They're, you know, it's, was supposed to go in effect October 1st. And there's many listings on the internet either way, either company that are listing rentals for less than seven days. So I just thought maybe we could, as a new council as well, get the staff together with a report on what's happening with ProChamps. You know, how many complaints we have, how many rentals are less than seven days? Is the code enforcement involved in this? Ms. Jackson says she has some information she could bring to the meeting. You know, this lady filed a complaint 13 days ago, hasn't heard anything. I just, you know, are, are homesteaded properties that are being rented as a business? Is that something we're looking at? I just think, you know, it's been a month since it went into effect and it's been a long time getting all this together. I just would like to see where we are, what's happening, maybe have a representative from ProChamps come and talk to us. And I thought maybe we could do it on December 7th, that special meeting, have it for the promenade and also the short-term rentals, just to get us all on the same page, see where we're at, see where we need to be and, and go from there. So I would just like council's opinion and.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Kellum. So it sounds like you were at the 30-day point from when I think the letters went out and you're looking for a general update on how the contract is being administered that we sign with ProChamps.
Right.
What is the status update? If ProChamps, I'm, I think having an update by December 7th would mark, I guess, the 60-day point. And so we're at the 30-day point. For me, I, I actually just requested a little bit of information from our community development director, David Dickey. And he, I don't know if he got, he was, he was working on it and, and I, and I think that's a little, maybe a line item of what you're looking for, but maybe in the short run, an update to council when you, when you can get it would be healthy, especially for the new council. And then if December 7th, we already got that meeting scheduled, if we want to add in, that's the 60-day mark. We know this is really important to the citizens of the community.
Absolutely.
So, thank you. I'm just making sure I understand your request and I think it's a good idea.
I would just like to give Dave just a moment to comment on that if you may, Mayor.
Please, I'm done.
Yeah, last week, as the mayor just indicated, he asked for some information and I actually got that this afternoon. So I can, I can verbally give you the, a report or I can provide you with the spreadsheet that was given to me. But there's very few, as of, as of today, there was only three logged complaints to ProChamps via the online, the phone, the portal, the phone portal. And they were too unique. There was two, two calls from one anonymous caller. So it may be the lady that you're referring to. I don't know. And then there was a, a second one who did identify themselves. There's been very few phoned complaints into ProChamps based on the information I was given today. And I would like to say that I, I think this is a great idea. What I would like to do is perhaps dig into providing the council with a, kind of a, a step-by-step process. So the council and any resident can get onto the ProChamps website and look for yourselves. Look to see what, what information is there available to the council and to residents. So I, I think it's a tool that we can maybe perhaps use a little bit better. But if, if that's the wish of the council to do something on the 7th, it's certainly doable.
And I'm concerned about the comment that they wanted to know if it was going to be an anonymous request. That is not something they should be asking.
No, and, and that frankly, that surprised me because we did specifically talk about that with the ProChamps folks as well as their, their contractor who's actually manning the phones. And if you, I don't know if you remember, Todd, but we actually went through a kind of a role play with one of the members, the, the call center folks. And we specifically talked about this issue, about the anonymous, the, so I'm, we'll dig into that. So I'm, we'll dig into that. If that's the case, if that's what happened, that's a problem.
Well, that's my, my point is, are the employees telling people when they call, oh, yes, you can make it?
Yeah, we went to the level of, there's, there's a flow chart that is a script that the, the phone people say they have to follow this flow chart, if this, then that, if this, then that. And everywhere through there, we struck that you can't have anonymous. We actually revised that flow chart, I think, twice. So we were very thorough about no anonymizes to be accepted. So I find that very alarming that you heard that.
Right. And that's why I think that we need a meeting with them and with staff, you know, Dave's. And, you know, also, they, this lady told me, and probably Ms. Jackson could verify it too, out of 200 listings on VRBO, 20, wait, 88 had BTR licenses in the city. What, you know, we need to get on that, you know? So, you know, that's part of what I, I think, and to bring up, bring the new council up to speed with what's happening. And this is very important to the citizens of our city. And it's ironic, I was reading through old minutes of short-term rentals and how long it's been in of, you know, that we've been talking about it. And, you know, Buzz Pesto's, back when he was on the council, said, if we're not careful, our town is going to turn into a resort rental town. And that's where we are. And that was 10 years ago, and what foresight he had. So I'm, I just think it's very important. We need to get it right, and, and the citizens are wanting to know what's happening, so.
Yes. Councilmember Willis?
This is directed to Mr. Dickey. Is there a deliverables document for ProChamps?
Yes, when we entered into the contract with ProChamps, and I don't recall the specific month, but if, if we were to go back onto that agenda item, there was a scope of services, and I believe there were some bulleted deliverables as part of that agenda packet. So if you'd like, I can, I can make sure that's sent out to the council.
Prior to the December 7th, if that's what we're going to do.
Sure.
I would appreciate seeing that.
Yep, I just want to add, and I think I requested the contract from Utah. But if, I think if this council, and it goes back to, unless it's changed, it'll be in the agenda packet. We adopted that contract, what, three meetings ago, I think, roughly. Getting that contract, putting, and then we passed a slew of regulations. So you got the regulations, the contract, and then you got what's actually happening. I called ProChamps. I don't know if you've called them. I can tell you just from a user experience, very nice people. I had a very good experience with their friendliness, but did not sound like they understood the contract they were administering. And I don't want to waste time on all the issues I saw, but I think councilmember, or Mayor Tim Kellum, what this council could do is draft, get our questions, in fairness, to the city manager and Dave, get our questions over. Like, councilmember Willis has asked one, maybe summarize to him. And then you, that'll give you some framework of where we are. But just some issues that jumped out to me was when I called, you know, you could leave an anonymous complaint right online. So you check the box, and it's anonymous. And so if that's not an option, why is that there? The second thing is when you track the issue, I don't know if you said this, but the issue on the form, seven-day minimum wasn't an issue on the form. And I'm like, that's a.
That's a major thing.
That's a, that's it. And then when I asked, they said, the seven-day minimum, is that, is that something that, that we can add on? And they said, no, we can't, we can't add that. And I said, in, in defense of them, they, they were being honest. They said, that's something that the city would have to decide. I said, okay. And we got through the conversation a little bit further, and I said, so what happens to an anonymous complaint? And they said, well, it comes in online, they fill out our form, we're notified of the complaint. And then I said, and then what do you do with it? And they said, it goes to the city. I said, okay. And they said, well, it's automatically emailed to the city. And so when somebody fills out a form, the city automatically emails it. And that's when I'm thinking, well, how many of the, there must not be a lot of complaints happening. And it sounds like there isn't. There's only been a few. That actually makes sense to me. It's a new program. It takes a time to get people adopted and to know who ProChamps is, what this, how to use it. But I think that the, getting those regulations, the one regulation we know that's been there for a long time is the seven-day minimum. That's been the toughest one for us to enforce. And if we can figure out, and I'm willing to accept if we still don't have a solution, but I won't give up on trying to help support staff enforce that seven-day minimum. Because if that gets enforced, a lot of these problems will go away. And I'm not saying that's an easy task. In fact, I know it's a difficult task. But whoever can figure it out is going to make a lot of money. I'm convinced of that. Hopefully, it's ProChamps. I really do hope that it's them. And it just, little clunky, little gaps, not picking on them. I think they can work it out. You might have your own experience. I don't know. I'm a, I'm rooting them on. And, and I think that the idea of coming together in 30 days or on 7th is an excellent one, so thank you.
So Mayor, for clarity, we're looking for an update on ProChamps at which council meeting?
The 7th.
Update on the 7th? And does that update include a presentation by ProChamps themselves?
Yes. I'll let. Yep. I want to make sure that, here's my issue with that. If, if.
I'm sorry.
If, if Dave, if, if they're having tensions or if they're, who knows? I want to put our staff as the priority first, and if you're happy with that.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm happy, and I'm not discounting any of your experiences. I'm, actually, I'm glad we're hearing these. And I would appreciate a, if there was some way I could, if you could get your experiences to me in an email or something.
Yep.
Where we could approach ProChamps on these issues. So, no, I, I think it would be great to get them to make a presentation on the 7th. Yeah.
Understood. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one discussion? Sounds like, did you get what you were hoping for?
Yeah, I just, I think it's really important that we get, we group together, get, get it figured out, get it right, and for the residents, yes.
It's a big one. We will be heroes if we figure this one out, if that gives any motivation. With that, I will ask city manager, I'm going to start with you. Do you have any reports for us today?
Yes, sir. Very quickly, would like to get consensus from council regarding the 12/21, December 21 meeting. We're proposing, and I've discussed this with each of you before, a security briefing. This is with BC SO, talks about security of the council chambers during public meetings. It is a meeting that would be closed to the public because it deals with security. We're proposing a four o'clock meeting for that on December 21st, followed immediately at 4:30 with a public meeting on Roberts Rules of Order, primer and refresher. Several of us are very familiar with Roberts Rules, but to some, it's a little bit newer. So that would be a four o'clock closed meeting on security, a 4:30 open meeting on Roberts Rules. And then we're presuming we would have the five o'clock CRA meeting, leaving that open for that.
I'm looking at the December 21st.
Yes, sir.
Was that on the, the schedule we approved?
No, this was, we, we talked about having the security and the Roberts Rules meeting in December.
Of course. So it wouldn't be a, I think that's brilliant. I'm, that works for me. I'm looking at my calendar right now, but I'm one person. So if you're looking for, do you want us to just email you tomorrow, get a chance to talk?
Yeah, well.
Need a motion tonight?
We'll just need consensus if we can schedule it. And it's, we're proposing Tuesday, December 21st, which is the regular council meeting. Just meeting a little earlier to go over those two things.
What, it.
Sounds good.
It works for me. I mean, but that's easy for me to say, and I don't know if there's.
And Mayor, and I know that we haven't confirmed that we're having a CRA board meeting on that date. I think that will be determined on the meeting on December 7th. So if the consensus is at that point that we don't have a CRA board meeting on the 21st, obviously, I would want to move that training up instead of having it but 4:00 and 4:30, move it to 5:00 and 5:30. So it's be less impactful to everyone's schedule, personal schedules.
I think we have consist, consensus, but I know how it is. I'll get home and get in trouble because my wife will say, why did you agree to that? This is happening. But as of now, I think I'm good. And in tomorrow, I guess, give us 24 hours to back out if we need to, but assume we're good. Are y'all okay with that?
Yep.
I'm okay if I can ask the audience.
Oh, yeah.
Not everybody has a wife up here, John.
Okay, I think we're good.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
City attorney, any reports?
No reports, sir. Congratulations to our new council member.
Yes, thank you. City clerk's office, any reports?
Not yet.
Okay. Anything from our?
Just going to tackle the annual audit first we can decide.
No pressure. I like it. Commander or deputies, anything from your side, fire? Good. Thank you for what you do. Mayor Tim Kellum?
Yes, just a couple of things. I wanted to say that we had a really nice ceremony at Veterans Park on the 11th, and the park looked awesome. It was well-attended both by the VFW and the American Legion. And thank you to Gustavo and his staff for making it look beautiful. And then I wanted to thank Jim Moore and his crew for putting up the Children at Play signs. Hey, Jim, thank you. In Harbor Heights, it seems to have slowed the traffic down a little bit. The people are really happy with it, so thank you again for doing that. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis?
I just want to publicly thank Mr. Moore for addressing an issue during the campaign session that him and Melinda Hoosier went out and met with a constituent, if you will, and they were very professional and handled the situation quickly. And I commend them for their handling of that. Their customer service was excellent.
Thank you. Let's remember Davis. You. Let's remember Raymond.
Yes, I continued to go to Space Coast League of Cities, and I was there, I think we were at Dixie Crossroads. Titusville hosted that. And they also approved the entire year's schedule. And I think that's something that we may need to discuss. April.
For the league?
Yes, for the league. I guess we need to say this is a schedule. And I don't think that I've missed many meetings, that's for sure, in four years. So we continue to work, and Linda Weatherman talked about the economic development in Brevard County. And as we know, things are moving, 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 moving. And people want to live here, and they want to live in a city because they do like the services in a city. And that was an interesting talk. And then we're talking about advocacy and what we're going up to Tallahassee for, and talking about different issues, especially issues having to do with municipals. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, all I want to say is, thank you all. Hopefully, I appreciate the work that everyone's doing. It's very important that we're taking the time to do this. As Councilmember Brown said, it's, it's certainly not about the money, and so I know the sacrifices we make. And just want to thank you all. I am very excited about the next 12 months at least, and where we're headed. Thank the staff, thank everyone. I can't thank you enough. And if there are no objections, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.